Madam President, we are now recording, so we can begin the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the November 17th, 2020 work session in Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5:00 PM today. By way of announcements, we also have the board met in virtual executive sessions on November 5th, 2020 and November 7th, I'm sorry, November 12th, 2020, for the purpose of discussing matters of personnel involving potential promotion of an administrative employee of the district, as well as information and strategy related to collective bargaining with Mathacton Education Association. The board met in a virtual executive session on November 11th, 2020 for the purpose of consulting with the solicitor regarding a potential legal matter involving the district's health and safety plan. By way of attendance, it looks like we have all board members present this evening. As we don't have any voting items, I don't think it's necessary to do a roll call vote, a roll call for attendance, I'm sorry. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of guests and scheduled speakers. We have the 2019-20 fiscal year-end audit. We have the Arrowhead New Construction presentation. I have an administrative staffing recommendation. And then I have an item here for the board's discussion and feedback on athletics activities and the facility use related to a recent spike in positivity and incident rates of COVID. With that said, I am going to ask Mr. Bricker if we are ready for the audit, which it appears we're not. We're still trying to hunt down the the individual who's scheduled to present this evening. He doesn't seem to be on the call.
He is trying to join now, I'm being told, Dr. Zerbi.
Okay.
Do you want to start with the Arrowhead and then move to this, or do you want to just give him?
Did you?
You want to give him a couple of seconds?
I could show everyone my dog for a few seconds. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just me.
Thank you. That's, that's nice.
I'm sorry. I just know it's gonna be a long night. I had to make one joke. I'm quiet now.
No, you're good. You're good. That helped, that helped calm the silence. We, we will give him one more second. I don't see him. So, Mr. Kelly, are you and your team ready to present? Arrowhead New Construction bid result presentation and recommendation. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, we are.
All right, excellent. So I made you a co-host. You should be able to present. I'll stop my sharing of the screen and allow you to take over.
Yes, screen two. Share. All right, you should be seeing the Arrowhead Ford presentation. Everybody good? Everybody can hear me? All right, well, thank you for having us tonight. Like you said, I know you have a long night, so we'll, we'll go forward with this rather quickly, which was not the, not the jump, jump ahead, but some very good news. The schedule, as we've been talking to you guys over the last, well, well over a year, has been the study of, of, of Arrowhead itself, the existing conditions, a lot of options there. Approving to move ahead with the building of a new building. We had board approval in June for the construction drawings, our Act 34 hearing on September 8th. Last week, we met with the building committee. So a lot of what you'll see tonight has been discussed with them. Tonight is the board review. We're into the, the section called the big night. We're talking tonight about moving forward with construction. This is to build the building. This is, this is the time where we're approving, what you'll see tonight are five contracts. We're going to talk about the four main construction contracts, the fifth being asbestos, but contracts to go ahead and, and, and build the new building. The once we completed all of the, the bid drawings, they went out to bid. That was again back in September there. Bids were open at 3:15 PM on October 29th. So bidders were given about four weeks, a little under that, to produce their bids. We had a lot of bidding. There's a lot of good competition out there. To have five general contractors, 13 mechanical and eight of each for, for electrical and plumbing, is a really good result. There's a lot of competition and we feel really good about the, the number of bids that were received. Just to provide some context, this was the budget that we were looking at. The last time that we worked with Becker-Frondorf on our existing budget, they had a project of, at $28.9 million. That breaks down into these four contracts, general contractor, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Again, the way that they will break down and the contracts that you will be awarding to, to proceed with the building. So these are the budgets that we were looking at. The total construction base bid, so meaning the, the base bid number, and we're going to get into the alternates, it's going to be kind of the meat of tonight, came in like this. Working from bottom up, plumbing was about 160,000. This is kind of how we opened them as well, so we were feeling pretty good. Electrical was 120,000 under. Mechanical was $130,000 under. And then the general contractor was the one that we were obviously most pleased at, and that was about four and a half million dollars under budget. So we're looking at a base bid number of $23.6 million for the base bid of, of the project, which is, which is incredible. So we were rejoicing. We were very happy. As I mentioned, we were severely under budget when it, well, not severely, but enough under budget for the general contractor that we were saving quite a lot. We went through and vetted all of these numbers between ourselves and Fidavia. We've met with every one of these contractors, actually visited the, the Lansdale home of the mechanical and plumbing contractor. And over the last couple of weeks have, had vetted all these together with, with the low bidders. So this is where we're at with the, the low bid base bid numbers. 23.6 million, you're about $5.2 million under budget. If you took all of the deducts, now remember, there are some alternates that were subtractive. Let's take these things out. And there were some alternates that were additive. Let's put something in. If you elected to take all of the deducts, that would reduce that 26, I'm sorry, 23.6 down to about 22.6. If you elected to take all of the adds, that number would go up to 24.2. So somewhere in between there is obviously where you're, where you'll, where you'll be. And we'll, we'll go through here now, the deducts and adds and all the alternates and kind of give you our recommendation and the committee's recommendation of which ones to select. So as I mentioned before, there were 19 alternates, things like casework in classrooms, floor finishes, ceiling finishes, roofing, all of these other things, all the way down to actually the reduction of classrooms. Remember, we had that as an alternate as well. So if there aren't any questions about the base bids, I'll jump into the alternates. So the first one. Typical classroom casework. We said the, the base bid, meaning this is already in the building, was just the casework along the corridor walls. It's a teacher's wardrobe, a sink and some casework there. Alternate one was providing some additional casework along the exterior wall, a lot more storage. And that was about $115,000. That's for every classroom. So that's a lot of additional casework. The second alternate, so there were two, was to add bookshelves instead of just casework along the exterior wall and some high cabinets along the corridor. So this is what we would typically have as a fully built out assessment of, of casework. So the alternate two was $40,000. That, that again, just number two is adding bookshelves and this high casework at $40,000, which is very inexpensive when you look at the linear cost per, per foot of casework. So the bidding results for both, if you took alternates one and two, is $155,000 in addition to the basement. That's just about $4,800 a classroom. And we are recommending, we are recommending this. Casework, storage in classrooms, especially in elementary schools, is critically important. This type of casework will provide the ability for teachers to keep a lot of storage and things off the floor. It'll make the rooms feel a lot bigger. And again, the, the number that the alternate is, the add alternate, as opposed to what we typically see in linear feet per casework is, is very low. So we were, we were definitely recommending to add these two alternates into the project. Flooring is the next part. Typically, what you have now, as you can see on the left there, you have existing carpet and VCT. VCT is vinyl composite tile in your classrooms. So it's a little one foot by one foot squares. In your corridors in Arrowhead now, you have terrazzo. Terrazzo is a, a poured flooring top. It's one of those floors that you'll never have to replace. It lasts for forever. But there is some VCT and carpet in your corridors as well. So kind of a, an understanding of what's, what's currently existing in your existing school. And, and most of your other schools are very similar to this as well. So there were alternates for classroom flooring as well as corridor flooring. In the classrooms, there was a difference between quartz, which is a, which is also a tile, very similar to vinyl tile, but it's much more durable. It's actually a through-body tile. Even if it's scratched, it, it still is the same material underneath versus vinyl tile. If that gets scratched, it's just black underneath. It's essentially just a tile with a coating on top or, or an image printed on top versus anything thicker than that. In the corridors, there was an alternate for quartz tile, a higher grade tile or terrazzo. Terrazzo again is what you have in most of your existing schools and corridors. It is a, like I said, basically the most durable flooring material you can find. It's again, the, the first and last flooring you'll ever need to, to put down in the, in the school. So these are considered deduct alternates. In the base bid right now, we have terrazzo flooring in the corridors and, and quartz tile, the better tile in the classroom. So these are deducts if you choose to take them out. As you can see, terrazzo is expensive to take, to reduce from terrazzo to quartz is 115,000 in the first floor, 110,000 on the second floor. We do show terrazzo in the, in the cafeteria as well. So it's a potential deduct of $266,000. However, for the cost of this, again, when we're seeing this in other projects, this is a low number for terrazzo in that amount of terrazzo that we're looking at in the school. 266,000 is a lot of money, but you'll spend that in 10 years when you have to redo all the corridors again, when it's time for the tile to be replaced. Corridors get beat up the most, cafeterias get beat up the most. Terrazzo is the most durable flooring you can put in any type of building. So we are not recommending approving taking the terrazzo out. So we're recommending staying with the terrazzo in the, in the project. Classroom flooring, again, we had a luxury vinyl tile, which is a little bit of a different tile from, from VCT. That's fine, but not as, certainly not as durable as quartz style. And again, you can see the deduct for vinyl composite tile in all of the classrooms. So again, you're looking at a $75,000 deduct, but you're going from a significantly better floor finish, floor tile, something that doesn't have to be waxed. And a lot of your schools that have vinyl composite tile, you're taking all the furniture out all summer, stripping down the, the, the coating, re-waxing, re-buffing. You don't have to do that with quartz tile. It's, it's a matte finish. You basically dry mop it and it's clean. So we feel that this is not, again, not something that we would recommend approving, meaning that we would not want you to take out the higher quality tile. Ceilings. The only area that we have a ceiling alternate was in the, the two innovative spaces. There was an alternate for acoustical baffles. That's what's in the project now. That's similar to the picture to the right that we've been showing versus linear metal. The difference here is what's called the NRC rating. That's the acoustic rating of that ceiling. A typical ceiling tile, for example, is a .7. So going to a linear metal at .8, 8.5, or acoustical baffle at 1.06 is creating a much more sound-absorbed and material in that area. That, that area is designed to be noisy, but we certainly don't want it to be too noisy. That is another deduct alternate of $12,000 to go from the baffles to the linear metals. So again, even linear metal is a little bit better than your typical two-by-four ceiling tile, but it's certainly not as good as, as the acoustical baffles there. And again, 12,000 is still 12,000, but it's in our estimate, it wasn't enough to, to say, let's, let's remove that and go to a lesser functioning acoustical material. So we were not recommending taking, taking the acoustic baffles out and going to linear metal. Roofing materials. There was a base bid for TPO versus EPDM. It's basically a rubber membrane versus TPO, which is more of a plastic membrane. That is, TPO is the district's choice for roofs. That's, all of your roofs are being re-roofed with TPO. The difference was really nominal for EPDM versus TPO. So as the, as a district decision, that was not being recommended to be taken as well as a deduct, rather than staying with the, the TPO, which is your district standard. Toilet room floors. There was a base bid for ceramic tile. There was an add alternate for resonance flooring. Resident flooring, resident, resonance flooring is kind of a poured flooring. Again, a district standard for ceramic tile. This was kind of a price check on the ceramic tile, guys, as well. We would not recommend adding costs to the project for a flooring that we all kind of agreed that the ceramic tile was a better flooring anyway. But again, we needed to, to share all the alternates with you there. Two more, the, which can be a little confusing, unclassified site work, basically meaning we would ask the, the contractors, anything they find below ground, rock, things like that. If, if it's substantial in nature, they can often ask for a change order for the removal of all of those materials, that rock and other kind of unsuitable soils. So we asked for them to include an unclassified site work alternate in their bids. The bid for this was $90,000, which seems like a lot. But we could make that up very quickly in the site if we start to find rocks or boulders. The building is up on some fill, but there are a lot of areas where we're digging. There's retention areas. There's areas that we are digging down. And talking with Fidavia as well as the, the building committee, we felt that it was recommended to approve this, to keep this in as an insurance policy. Would you spend all 90? Maybe, but if it gets more than that, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars if we start to find things that are unsuitable underneath, underneath the ground. So we were recommending taking that unclassified site work alternate, basically meaning again, anything that the contractors find, they're, they're in charge of removing. There's no change orders for those. Another thing that we were strongly recommending as well, that's called a, a five-foot fill underneath the building pad. So basically, they're going to start construction in December and January. You're going to have frozen ground. You're going to have snow. You're going to have wet ground through the spring. We have found that by adding fill underneath the building pad, adding additional stone than what we would typically have, it creates a much better pad for the building to be built around. And what it does is prevents delays. When it rains in February and March, and now they're just pushing goo and mud around the site, it slows them down. They can't get out of the ground. If we have a significant amount of stone underneath the building, it keeps them moving and prevents delays due to wet soil. So that was an add of 75,000. Again, the committee and us and Fidavia was, was recommending moving ahead with that. The sooner you can get out of the ground, the better, much better chances you are of staying on schedule. Two more that are down in the weeds a bit. There was an alternate for some different automatic mechanical controls. Again, this was kind of a price check. The existing one that was, or the, the one that's in the base bid was the one that the district wanted to, to maintain. So we are not recommending certainly adding any cost to the project by going with a automated controls that you don't want. Lightning protection was $48,000. That was not recommended adding to the project as well. After consultation with your insurance company, they said it really didn't affect your insurance rates at all, whether the building had lightning protection or not. It's fine to have, but if lightning strikes your building, you know, you're going to have things that you're going to need to fix regardless of whether you have lightning protection or not. Some districts actually put this in as an alternate. If it affects their insurance rates, it does not in your sense, so we would not recommend adding that cost for lightning protection. Distributed antenna system. This is basically much improved wireless service throughout the building. We are seeing a lot of schools doing this, even though it is a very high cost. What this is doing is, is boosting the cellular service in your building. So this is not Wi-Fi for student laptops and things. This is wireless service for cell phones. What we heard a lot from teachers on site was, you know, when I'm in the building or we're on site, cell service in that area isn't very good. So that's why we added that as an alternate here. And again, after consultation with the, the building committee, as well as Bob Jones and some, and some people from the school, they recommended including this in the project because, because of some concerns with wireless service. And there are some security concerns that go along with that, making sure that everybody can use their, use their cell phones in case of emergency. Bipolar ionization. This is a new thing in the post-COVID world. I guess we're not post yet, but in COVID world. This is a biomagnetic filtration for HVAC systems. So what this is, rather than the filters that you have in your house or what you'll see in buildings that are, you know, the MERV 15, MERV 16 filters, those are catching dust, that's catching pollen, that's catching things that you can see. COVID, the flu, things like that are particulates in the air. It's, it's droplets. It's not something that those filters tend to catch very easily. So you can have UV light, and if the UV light sees that piece of bio disease floating around, it'll zap it, but only if it can see it. So it needs to be of a certain size. It needs to be going through where all the laser beams are if you had UV light. What bipolar ionization does is it creates a magnetic filtration in the ductwork. So it, anything that's floating through there that isn't air, it's sucked into the, the magnet and essentially pulled away. We're seeing this in a lot of clean labs. We're seeing this in hospitals and surgical centers. Now we're starting to see them in offices and schools. It's less taxing on your HVAC system than big thick filters. If you, the thicker the filter, the harder it is for those HVAC systems to, to push air through, so that your mechanical system has to work a little more. So with this, it doesn't have to push anything, doesn't have to push the air as hard. It's an add of about $40,000. We were certainly recommending doing that as, as again, just a, another way to ensure that we're having the best indoor air quality that we can provide for the students in the school. Last two, I promise. This is the reduction of school classrooms. We wanted to have a, a couple of areas where we could have some large deducts in case the bids went the other way, and we came in over budget. Thankfully, again, it's not the case. But in the, in these alternates, there was a reduction of two classrooms. So basically, you're taking, whoops, you're taking the two classrooms, you know, one on each floor, and that was a reduction of about $240,000 or 120,000 per classroom. If you look at the other alternate, there was two, one to take two classrooms away, another one to take four classrooms away. That was 430,000 or about 108,000 square feet per classroom. If you think about it as cost per square foot, to take four classrooms away is $128 per square foot. The average building cost for the entire project is 281. So if you think of it that way, if you're taking to eliminate a classroom, it would cost you at least two and a half times to bring it back. Probably more if you went and did it five, 10 years from now. So again, we kind of had these as safeguards in case bidding came back over budget, we're under budget. So we would not recommend reducing the side of, of the building. And again, you know, as I've mentioned, if you took that out and came back and built it later, it could be three or four times as expensive as much as the, as the savings that you, that you may be getting if you, if you decided to, to take either one of the alternates. So if we looked at the, the budget, we looked at the construction base bids, and what we're looking at now is what we're recommending. So we took out a few things. We added a few things back in. So the budget was $28.9 million for the building. The base bid was 23.6. We're recommending a construction contract of $24.1 million. That is still $4.7 million under budget. Again, the bidding market right now, you never know how things are going. We certainly didn't know that we're going to be in a pandemic when we started this. Bidding is very hungry right now. This is a phenomenal outcome. It's well below budget. The durability of, of the equipment that we were proposing will create a very durable, long, long-lasting school. This is the school we've been talking about with you guys for over a year. So this is the, the project. These are the contracts that we are recommending that you would proceed with. Last slide is schedules. Basically, you're going to talk about this tonight, vote next week. We would provide notice to proceed to the contractors and actually right away, we need to do that legally by December 14th. Site preparation would start in December. Construction areas would start in February, and you'd start to see the big heavy equipment coming out in, in February. So we'd have temporary fencing. We'd be moving the, the modulators would be removed. The playground would be moved to the front of the school, and everything would be ready for the big trucks to come in in February, wrapping up the building in July of '22. Then the existing building would come down the summer of '22 and into, into the fall there. The fields itself, that green field over there, there would be some seeding and some site restoration that would, that would come back in the spring, just to make sure that the grass takes and everything like that in the spring. But you're looking at opening the school for the academic year of 2022 and '23. So that's the good news.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you, Jamie. Are there questions from members of the board? Mr. Navarre?
Yeah, I guess, just to sum up what we talked about in property previously, obviously, you know, we went through a great, a great amount of detail in this in property. It might cover a lot of that today. I guess I want to kind of reiterate some of those things, and then Michael, I'd expand on some of them for, for the folks here, because I think they're instructive to, to what we're talking about. I get, the first thing, obviously, you know, we came in way underneath our budget, which was, you know, in some ways expected, right? We had, you talked all the way through this process about the fact that we were, you know, we're trying to stay at a conservative number, right? So we don't get you know, an unpleasant surprise when we open bids. But there were other factors that played into it. Can you talk through those?
What we've heard from contractors is, is there's two things. There's labor and there's material. Material costs have risen, but labor costs have stayed steady or have gone down a little bit, especially when you look But labor costs have stayed steady or have gone down a little bit, especially when you look at something like the general contractor. Obviously, everybody was a little low. The general contractor is much more low, but again, they've got a much larger contract. So they're, you know, in the millions under versus the hundreds of thousands. But these are all good companies. These are all companies that we've worked with in the past or for Davia has experiences with as well. And like we said, we we kind of vetted everyone's. Credentials and and talked to other contractors or other. Schools or universities that are working with these contractors now. So I I think. Contractors always ask us if we're busy because they know we're about a year ahead of them. So we've been telling them, yeah, this is this is a good project that will be. Yours to construct for the next, you know, almost two years. They're looking for stability. So we're we're seeing. A lot of aggressiveness in the market now, September, October, November. Versus, you know, schools that we just bid in in the spring. So some of these numbers are are. Close to or a little under. What they would be in the spring, whereas traditionally they should be obviously growing and getting more expensive as they go. But we feel we're we're in a a good position here. I, you know, I certainly don't want to say it's a. It's a good thing that we're in the economy and pandemic that we're in now. But those certainly have some. Some advantages in this case, or you're seeing the result, I should say. Of of the market right now, and it's certainly a positive when it comes to to this project.
Yeah, Ralph, can I chime in real quick, Ralph?
Yeah, in fact, Dan, I was going to ask you to because I think, you know, you're our owner's rep on this project and and certainly, you know, we always ask questions about. Contractors, right? We're fighting something now with Eagleville where we got a bum facade that was built that we've got to deal with. We ran into problems on the field project. That resulted in some legal action. So, you know, we all want to, I guess, have some sense of who who won these jobs and what their what their reputation is.
Yeah, and I I just want to punctuate what Mike said about. Without repeating everything he said about the marketplace, you do have an attractive project. It's not, you know, there's a lot of renovation. More difficult projects out there that maybe are not as simple to price and bill and bid. The fact that we got thirty four contractors for four. For four awarded contracts is 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 really phenomenal, and it's reflective of the effort that went in. Over the course of the last couple of months in particular, but even leading up to that. So. It's there's, you know, we can talk about how much we're on the budget, but from a district standpoint. To be able to say that you got the best value that's in the marketplace because of. The amount of competition that was out there on the projects important. And as far as the under budget thing, just as a real side note. Methactan, we had that, which I'll say is a very unexciting tank and canopy project that we received bids on today, and we were on the budget for that as well. So. It's no surprise, I think, right now that we're on the budget particularly for that project. And and just to echo what Mike had said. Earlier about the contractors, we we did have some concerns. We have, we have experience with two of the four, well, truly two of the three, because. The one mechanical contractor, mechanical plumbing contractor is the same entity. Neither of our firms have direct experience. I believe. The engineering firm under Mike is aware and has some knowledge of that firm. We we went besides meeting with the contractor and the ownership of that particular contractor. We 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 called all of their. School references, many of whom were in and around Methactan, and they all, all the references came back glowing. So we, I think we did our job as far as vetting. The the firms pretty closely. And and I can expand on that anymore that you might want, Ralph, but that's kind of a summary.
No, that's good, Dan. That's what I wanted. I just wanted everybody to kind of get the same, the same thing that we heard in in committee. I guess two, two more follow up questions. Or really just one, maybe this is too much in the weeds right now. Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Mike, can you just talk about the lightning protection for a minute and and what exactly that is? Because. I think as you presented it here, it sounds like, hey, we can protect our building from lightning, but we're going to choose not to. So could you explain exactly what that system is? And and what it actually protects us from and why? And and then I guess expand on some of the. You know, with the discussion that we had around the financial incentive not to do it. You're muted.
Muted, Mike. You're muted.
I see people do that all the time. Like, I can't believe people don't know they're muted. Sorry about that. What you'll see is a lot of little spikes going around the outside and perimeter of the building. Essentially, what it's trying to do is sort of predict where lightning is going to strike. And then ground that charge. So instead of. Hitting the building and messing up whatever it hits, it's trying to. To find where it is, route it around the building and then throw it into the ground for additional protection. It's perfectly fine to do. Again, we see school districts do this in areas where they may be up on a hill. Or may have had lightning strikes in the past. It doesn't a hundred percent prevent any type of damage. Lightning might hit an area that didn't have a spike. It may. It still may hit one of those areas. It still may ground and still can cause. Damage to the building or or camera systems or things like that. So it's perfectly fine to add. I don't think, as I said, it's it's the end all be all of all protectant. It's not a hundred percent guarantee of of damage. We see, as I mentioned, sometimes. School districts are asked to do this to see if their insurance rates will go down. Sometimes it goes down a little. I I believe in your case, there there actually wasn't a reduction in insurance costs. So there there's really no buyback. It is a little bit of extra protection, like I said, but. You know, after talking about it, it's, you know. Again, it's certainly up to you guys, but it's because it's not a a hundred percent protectant. It's it's really up to the to the committee and and didn't feel as we discussed that that it was. That it was worth the worth the payment.
Sure. And I guess I guess my question, Bob, do you? Do you know, I guess we don't have this on any of the other buildings in the district, do we?
Yes, we do. Yes, it is on the other elementaries, but it is also a tripping hazard up on the roof.
That's all the questions I have.
Are there other questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Ralph, I I attended most of the property committing online last week. Was there some discussion about the the deduction of the four or possibly two? Additional classrooms? I know I I understand the argument from Mr. Kelly related to. The cost of the deduction doesn't equal the cost of the. The two hundred and eighty one per square foot. So and also related to that. I'm just curious, yeah, Mr. Kelly said the two eighty one is very similar to what they would be expecting in the spring. So it doesn't sound like it's necessarily that much lower. Than sort of the the going rate. It's just not. As loud, large as it could have been in a typical timeframe. So those are my two first questions, I believe.
So Paul, I'll start and then I'll let Mike finish. I guess. We didn't spend an inordinate amount of time discussing the deduction of those two or four classrooms. Just because of the dollar value of it versus the benefit.
Yeah, and as and as we've talked at length about the capacity of of the school, one of the reasons to 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 build this, obviously, the the expanded. Projected enrollment here, you know, four classrooms is almost one per grade. So by removing those, we're we're taking out that 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 room for added growth. And even on day one, there's there's use for for all four of those. So. Again, we we included them as alternates as safeguards. But as we said, you know, again, the the cost to 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 put them back some other day if they were ever needed would be. Exponentially larger than than the savings you're getting if you consider taking them out.
And and then also, Mr. Kelly, if you can speak towards the sort of the. Going rates of the, I think you talked a couple of years ago about the square footage. I think at the time it might have been around two seventy or so, I believe.
That was the building.
Yeah.
So at two eighty one, you're looking here at building and site. I can tell you the. The schools that we did just this spring. Were two ninety, two ninety five, close to three hundred with building and site. Site work can be, you know, anywhere from thirty dollars or so square foot to the. The two seventy that we were looking at for the building. This is building and site. So again, as I said, this is. Between six months ago and now these numbers, this two eighty one is is less than what we saw six months ago. And again, I I would, I would kind of point to the market and say, you know, people are much more aggressive. They're worried about next year. And I think that's where we're we're seeing some savings there. Versus really going in the opposite direction where, you know, two ninety should be, you know, two ninety five or three hundred at this point or even higher.
Okay, so I believe the the analogy would be, all right, I want the car and then the next thing you know. Now I'm getting floor mats and everything else. So. What are some of the things? Certainly, I understand there's there's fees, your your cost associated with it. But I look at, if I look at, actually, if you go back to the previous, that when I look at the picture here, I it starts to. It it starts to make me wonder. I know that we had a separate line for. The casework that you talked about. You also had separate line item potentially for furniture. But it makes me wonder about all the other stuff that's inside there. For example, it looks like you have two or three rows of bleachers. It looks like the, obviously, it would be a fully loaded kitchen. Catherine for for cooking. What's behind the curtain of additional costs that we're not seeing in this particular?
Everything you're seeing. Here outside of furniture. Now, there is a furniture budget. We've been holding seven hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, and that's. In the grander full total project costs. We're still holding, you know, furniture. We're still holding contingencies. So in that larger number that we had been sharing in the past, all of those numbers are still there. You know, we still are are looking to provide. You know, furniture for the project. So over the next year and a half or so, we'll. We'll have conversations about that and be able to show bidding for that. There really isn't anything. Missing. I mean, you're still getting caseworks and whiteboards and lighting and and the bleachers are there and curtains and. Basketball backstops and all the kitchen equipment, like you said.
Okay, so so we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have a, we need a curtain for the for the stage. We're not gonna need. The bio refrigerator back down or those type of things are are included in the two eighty one per per square foot.
Yes, the the crude way of saying if it's glued or screwed. It's in the building. Anything movable like furniture is a separate budget.
All right, that's what I all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Other questions? Any other comments, questions? Mr. McGess?
Thank you. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I I just want to talk about the the estimates and the bids and. I'm not going to sit here and say I told you so, but I told you so. And I think one thing that we have to understand about the timing of these bids. And the compression of these prices is COVID related. Okay, and it sounds really, really weird that I'm celebrating something about COVID, but. These contractors that bid, they compressed their. Profit margins considerably. I didn't think it'd be this crazy, but. It it speaks to the point of the timing of this is that we got really, really lucky on two fronts. We got really lucky and as weird as it sounds because of COVID, and we got really lucky on the. Bond issuance of if the eighteen million dollar bond issuance at a one point eight percent yield. Trading as a premium. So we want on that and we want on this pricing. So. I I know the easy thing is to say, oh, well, the estimates were wrong. They weren't. They weren't. I got a funny feeling that the people at KCBA have done this before and they just took historical pricing and put it into this estimate. The difference is that these contractors need this job. And that's why we got the numbers we got. So the timing of this. Is luckily very good for us. I just wanted everyone to understand that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. B. Ms. Drummond, I think I saw your hand.
Yes, I had a question about the additional fee for removing rocks and boulders. And if you. I know we've had issues with that kind of work before, so could we just? We just get a reminder, refresher on. What are? What kind of rock situation we seem to run into with projects in this district and. And and what this cost of ninety thousand dollars, how that lines up with costs we might expect if we were to do it like à la carte.
Dan, you did a good job of explaining this in the property committee.
Can I jump in, Liz? And I hope you don't mind. I will add my two cents here because I deal in rock adders every day in my line of work. Basically, what this says is any hole that they dig, and they're going to have to dig a lot of holes, obviously, to clear the site. Anything they hit is on them. Okay, so if we didn't have this, anything they hit, they're going to come back to us with rock adders and and removal adders. And candidly. One of the bad news of them compressing their margins is we're going to get hit with a ton of change orders on this. They're going to come back and try and nickel and dime us to get regain some of that margin they had, they they lost on the bid. So what this says is whatever they hit is on them. So they don't come to us for. Hey, we tried to bore, we tried to do this and we hit rock and it's going to be an extra forty dollars a foot. And oh, my God, we have this spoils pile that's going to cost you a hundred thousand dollars to get rid of. So. This is basically saying it's a ninety thousand dollar insurance policy that they're going to hit more rock than ninety thousand dollars. We may win, we may lose, but if we don't close this door on change orders for rock adder. They're going to come back and and come back with a vengeance. I can promise that. So hopefully, Dan, that's not stealing your thunder, or if I'm out of line, I apologize.
It's gone. But Liz, I will add just by, you know, for reference. We weren't involved in the beginning of the stadium project, but I'm pretty sure my recollection serves me. Had you had this vehicle available to you when we started that project, you would have saved at least. That value in multiples of three, at least. Yeah, and just. I'm just gonna mimic everything that you just heard because it's true. If you you're dealing with a new building, just in just installing a retention basin, you know, to manage stormwater alone. You can go through that in in one or two or three multiples. So. It's great value, great value. And Mike's comment, not to repeat it, but it is important. We are going through foundation in a tough time of year. And we get, we have to hit the schedule. I do disagree. We're going to have, and I'll put our integrity on the line. We're going to have. We're going to have manageable change orders on this job, but that's a, that's an obvious place. The second item about the stone. The stone fill that that also is going to pay back in dividends in terms of keeping the schedule on and not running into change orders. Otherwise. I mean, we could extend the schedule. And just wait for the weather to happen, but then we're going to have claims from the other contractors because of delay and the over, it they're worth their weight in gold. And the stadium project proves it out.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, you know, given our historical knowledge of this type of work in our district, that this is a good value to add to the contract.
Yeah, I mean, above and beyond KCBA and for Davia's experience, which is universally saying, take these. Yes, your own district experience clearly says, take these alternatives. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Other questions from members of the board regarding the Arrowhead project? Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Yes, thank you. A couple of the questions that I had have already been addressed. I'm glad that we talked about the potential change in overall cost if with the. Reduction of classes because I know that's a a comment that has come up multiple times. The one question that I have is looking at the casework. Is that something that we have talked about in any of our conversations with our our current staff? I I'm having never been a teacher. I don't know a whole lot about how. You know, classroom management works with the the physical space, but I want to make sure that we are not. Creating limitations on the the use of the space. I'm just picturing this purely from a homeowner's perspective that. You know, if you have a room that has a built in feature, there's only so many ways that you can rearrange the furniture and use the space because of the the build ins. I don't want to create. Kind of a constraint for the teachers by putting in too much casework. But I mean. Have we talked to the teachers? Is there such a thing as too much casework? Or is this one of those things where like you could fill the room with cabinets and they'd be thrilled?
I, that's my opinion, and I think the teachers would agree with that as well. A lot of the teachers that we met with. Your existing classrooms again are are. Let's say unique. In the triangle. There's limited casework. There's some kind of over by the exterior, but then they have those little rooms kind of in between the two rooms. And they use that for for some storage and. Um, and they use that for, for some storage in there. So they were very concerned about, um, not having enough storage. Um, this is more than what they have now. Um, this is adequate to get, you know, and, and especially anytime you walk into any elementary school, there's stuff everywhere. Um, I don't think you can have enough storage in, in an elementary school classroom. Uh, we talked to them about cabinets versus drawers versus bookshelves, you know, because sometimes you do want kids to be able to go to a shelf and come back with something. Um, so there are, all of these things had kind of been, been vetted and we, we looked at that uh, for some things that, that kids would have access to versus areas where they wouldn't. So I, we, we see, you know, we're, we're definitely living under the adage of you can never have enough storage. Uh, we hear that all the time from teachers. Um, and, you know, we, we felt that, again, this was, these are typically big ticket items that we can use for, for bidding purposes and, and the fact that they, they came in, uh, very reasonable. Um, is why we were, we were recommending moving ahead with them. And, and again, I, I think, um, uh, most teachers would, would agree, more storage, the better there.
Okay, um, and then that, um, square footage cost that we had, you had talked about earlier, I believe it was two eighty one per square foot. Um, I, what are the, the conversations that comes up a lot in, um, the general public when we talk about this is the size of the gym? Um, and the fact that this gym is larger than, obviously much larger than what we currently have at Arrowhead. And, you know, concerns about whether or not it's actually needed for an elementary school to have a gym of that size. What is the difference in square footage between, um, the, the gym that we're proposing and say a typical elementary school gym size?
Well, you use the word typical. I will tell you, it is typical now.
Thing is typical.
Well, what I'll tell you is that the typical, this is a typical, um, elementary school, uh, gymnasium. Every, every school that we have built, and this is our sixth elementary school in two years, has a gym that's this size. Um, the, yes, it is much bigger than the gym that you're leaving. Um, but everything we heard was, it was too small. And we've talked again at length about having a gym separate from a cafeteria and the advantages of that. So this is different, uh, from what you have, uh, at the existing school. Um, but the, uh, the uses of this space are, um, you know, tremendously greater than, uh, the limitations that they have now. So, um, to compare this to typical, I will say this is typical. Again, the, the other schools that we saw uh, in our tour all had separate gyms and cafeterias, all had gyms this size. This is not big. Um, it's not a high school basketball court. Um, it is, it is meant for, um, PE classes. It is meant for, you know, a, a divider can come down, a net can come down in the middle and you could have gym class on one side and indoor recess on another. Um, youth leagues, you know, throughout the community can utilize these spaces. My, my son plays basketball at our local elementary school. Um, very similar. Um, you know, it's not, it's wide like a basketball court, but it's not nearly as long as, as, you know, high school or college. Um, so I believe that this is a typical, uh, twenty first century gym, albeit, you know, obviously larger than what was, again, deemed undersized gym, uh, that you have now.
Right. If everything about the current Arrowhead building was adequate, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. So I, I can appreciate that. And Mike, I'm glad that you brought up the part about the, um, community groups um, and athletic organizations using the space, because I know that that's another comment that we hear a lot is that this building is only benefiting a very narrow segment of our population. But the reality is that this, this space, particularly this gym space, will be utilized by children, um, methactin and non-methactin students, um, who live in our community. So it's, it's not just benefiting a small group. Um, but thank you once again for an excellent presentation, very thorough, very comprehensive and very excited to see those numbers come in so low. So thank you for everyone who worked on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, are there any other questions from members of the board?
A question.
Seeing no other hands.
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Purdue.
Um, so I know at the Act thirty four hearing, um, a comment was brought up about, I guess, post-COVID, right? And you even mentioned it. I know you mentioned, um, in your presentation tonight, you talked about the bipolar ionization. And I guess that's one of our post-COVID measures. Are there anything else we can look at? Or have you looked into anything else that you think may come down? I know we're still learning and we're still living in COVID times, but I'm wondering, are there any things that, I guess, when we look into a new construction that we need to be made aware of, that all we need to consider?
Yeah, and, and a lot of what we've researched and, and found over the last six months has been, um, kind of reiterating a lot of things that we've talked about in the past couple of years about better indoor air quality. Now, the, the bipolarization, um, ionization, sorry, um, is, uh, is new. Um, you know, zapping, um, uh, flu and, and bacteria and things like that in, uh, in our ductwork is new. Um, but, uh, having breakout spaces, having areas for kids to break out outside their classroom, so they're not just um, confined to, to smaller areas. There's a lot of schools now that are trying to move kids out into various areas, gyms, cafeterias, spaces like that that are being utilized for, for education now. Um, nurses' suite that have, um, isolation rooms. Uh, so if a, a child or, or a faculty member starts to show symptoms, it can be brought into the nurses' suite. There's a, um, negative pressure uh, air in there where, where all of that air just goes directly outside. None of it is, is brought back into the building. Um, and that's another safety measure that's being, uh, included in, in newer schools. So, um, uh, we're, we're looking at things like, um, hands-free, uh, stations for washing your hands, hand-free stations for uh, water bottle filling stations rather than, um, uh, water fountains and things like that. So, uh, there are, are certainly things that we have, um, been changing our ways over the past few years. Uh, and, and that's just exemplified that much more now that we're, um, that much more concerned about, um, uh, biohazards, uh, and, and, uh, diseases and things like that that could be, could be in the air. So, um, yeah, this is, this, this building is, is, uh, uh, very much in protocol with, um, with some modern practices now with, uh, with COVID and, and, um, you know, even just cold and flu concerns.
And if I could just add, Ms. Purdue, it's not quite on target with your question, but in case anyone's thinking of it, we did add language to the contract documents that would protect the district in terms of liability from COVID. So, uh, I mean, that's come up with a number of districts who are concerned about doing projects during COVID in the event that there's, you know, issues with, um, staff, you know, employees of the contractor who have, you know, file claims of various sorts, but there is language in the documents that specifically addresses that.
Um, I guess, can you speak a little bit more to that language? Is that really, um, when you say language in a document, is that for the construction during the construction period for those employees?
Yeah, like, for example, we know some districts that were apprehensive. Um, when the governor allowed districts to make their own decision as to whether or not to restart construction, you know, back in March. Um, there were some districts that were very apprehensive because nobody really knows how COVID liability is gonna play out. So specifically, there were concerns from uh, owners about, you know, what if a contractor has an issue on site and wants to file a claim claiming the district didn't uh, maintain proper procedures for, for the construction workers, you know, wasn't enforcing, uh, you know, the, the applicable CDC, et cetera, guidelines at that moment. But the way the contract documents are written, that responsibility is solely on the contractors and it explicitly removes the owner from liability. Does that answer your question?
No, I definitely do. But, and one of the things I, I'm not sure if we've talked about is just in relation to if, um, I guess new regulations come down within the next year or so, as we're learning more about how to deal with this, um, virus. What, I guess, what advantages or what do we have within this contract or when we think about new construction that will also protect us more, I guess, more for the district than anything else?
Well, I, I, again, just to, not to, to kind of expound, expand on what I just said. If something happens that's unforeseen, that causes a shutdown, we arguably, and I'm, and again, I'm doing hypotheticals now. But to answer your question, we, we might have to look at a potential delay scenario where we extend the schedule. I mean, for example, you know, when COVID first hit and contractors were allowed to start, there were limitations on the number of workers that were allowed in, you know, in a certain amount of square footage of building and the, and a separate figure for how, how site construction, outdoor construction was handled. Should we run into some of those things? It's a possibility. We may have to extend the schedule, but there wouldn't be liability um, coming your way from a cost standpoint. It would just be, uh, uh, basically a, an extension of time. So I, I feel pretty confident. I mean, if, 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 if the language, if the regulations came out with some, I'm just trying to imagine with something specific, like contractors were required to provide some additional type of sanitizing or something like that, where there was a truly unforeseen cost that the contractors are only having to deal with because of COVID, that might be something like totally unforeseen that the contractors could arguably make a claim about. But again, the big, the real, by far, the biggest issue is the unknown liability of people filing claims because they contract, you know, and are, are affected by COVID in some way. And, and again, you're, you're, you're protected in that regard. Does that, I'm sorry, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a convoluted, it's a long answer. I'm sorry.
No, Dan, I was gonna actually piggyback on that. So, and, and maybe Mike, you were, Dan, can, can answer this, but can you talk about what the schedule actually looks like, so let's say through the early spring, right? I mean, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, with all the discussions going on, that, you know, as we start to move into some kind of vaccination period and maybe, you know, in the spring, the early spring, late spring, we start to, you know, uh, avoid some of these issues that are there. But can you talk about what that schedule looks like in terms of individual work, group work? Clearly, we're not gonna have, you know, electricians, electricians working on top of each other in a building by that point. Um, so what, what work is being done on the site through the early spring?
Yeah, as, as we get started, it's, it's about getting out of the ground. Um, believe it or not, the, the big goal for next year is they're gonna, is to, to be under roof by next winter. Um, so this time, we're trying to get out of the ground, get our foundations poured, get the steel erected. Um, and, and really create the framing. So you're gonna have, um, you're gonna have plumbing and electric guys out there running stuff underground, but everything is really, uh, as Dan had mentioned, uh, exterior. It's out in the open. Um, it's site work. Um, until, uh, probably late summer, early fall before, you know, roofs are on. And um, again, we kinda wanna have the, the shell of the building completed by, uh, winter of twenty-two. Uh, so that's spring of twenty-two and, and into the summer of twenty-two, it's really just in interior work.
Um, so if you look at, um, this, if you refer back to Mr. McGinnis's comment earlier about COVID and the timing of things, uh, your project actually times well with COVID, because where there might be a, an issue with restriction of workforce, it's, it's, God willing, it's gonna be in the, way in the distance for when, when, you know, when COVID hopefully is in a much better place. You know, had, had you been working indoors now, we might be subject to an immediate issue, but like Mike says, that's not gonna be toward, you know, till this time next year sometime.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the board? Seeing no other questions, uh, thank you, uh, Mike Kelly. Thank you, Jamie Ober for, uh, the presentation and, and months of hard work. Uh, working with, uh, building principal, uh, Dr. Ian Roberts and his staff, as well as other administrators across the district. Um, and, and, and our board, of course. Uh, we will look, uh, for, uh, the approval of the agenda items, uh, so attributed to this project. And, uh, we will, uh, we will see you again, uh, next week in case there's any additional questions of, uh, prior to, uh, the consideration by the board. So thank you. Uh, with that, with that said, uh, we're going to actually go back to the first item on the agenda, which was the two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal year end audit. And it looks like we have, uh, the gentleman from, uh, Malle, uh, who is our, uh, internal auditors and, uh, we'll have him and Mr. Bricker, uh, present information associated with the audit. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you. Again, I apologize for the confusion on the start for tonight, but, uh, we are ready to go. And Don, if you would take us away?
Sounds good. Again, I apologize for jumping in five minutes late. I, uh, I think I got tonight's meeting mixed up with, uh, my audit manager Dale with next week's meeting, but, um, well, we finished our audit report. It's about an eighty-page report. Um, I believe most of you have gotten copies, but, um, put together just a little three or four-page uh, audit presentation summary here, um, that Tim brought up. Um, just wanna talk briefly about our required communications with the board. Um, the scope and timing of the audit, and then I just review some, some major items um, in, in the report, uh, not gonna, it's gonna be a very high-level overview. Um, and if you wanna jump to the next slide, Tim, um, or the next page. Um, typically, the one thing that I always like to remind boards, um, you know, we're giving an opinion on your financial statements that management, um, you know, has put together and, um, you know, there are the representations of management and those financials, and we're just giving an opinion um, on those financial statements, um, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Um, we've given an unmodified audit opinion, or what we refer to as a clean opinion. Um, and basically, uh, we're just stating that, in our opinion, financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles for governmental entities. Um, and also, we've given an opinion, um, on the single audit, which is the, uh, audit of your federal awards. Um, every year, um, any, any entity that gets federal funding over seven hundred fifty thousand is required to do um, the single audit and, um, we audit those federal awards. We typically audit a major program every year. Um, uh, programs such as Title One, Your Lunch Program. Uh, this year, the major program that we tested, um, primarily was the IDEA program. Um, so we're also giving an unmodified audit opinion on your audit of federal awards. Um, and then, um, the other thing that we always issue every year is a, what we refer to as a SASS one fourteen letter or a, a, a communication letter with the board, uh, really just, um, outlines, um, your, some of your responsibilities, some of our responsibilities, highlights things. Um, you know, if there was any major changes in accounting policies, which there really weren't this year, if there were any significant estimates in the report were required to, um, communicate with the board what those significant estimates are. Um, some of your significant estimates, um, typically are, um, the, the pension liabilities that are on the books, the other post-employment benefit liabilities on your books. Um, and some of your depreciation are some of the more significant, um, estimates. Um, and, and if we have any, um, material weaknesses in internal control or significant deficiencies in internal controls, we're required to report those. And I'm, um, happy to say that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls uh, that we believe were required to report under the standards. Um, so if you go to the next slide, um, just the audit scope and timing, um, I really have to thank, um, you know, your, your staff, Tim, um, you know, everybody that helped us through the audit this year, um, being, um, you know, with the pandemic going on, uh, we did a lot of things remote this year. Uh, whereas in other years, we might spend, um, you know, several, uh, you know, weeks out at the, um, district, looking at various invoices, looking at various documents. Um, this year, we really had to do a lot of things remotely. Um, quite frankly, some things worked out a little bit better doing it that way. Um, you know, so, but, uh, really, it did take a lot of effort when, when the district staff, and I appreciate all their efforts. Um, you know, we keep all of our work papers electronically, so, um, some of the things that we were getting remote. Um, you know, in, in some areas of the audit made it easier. There are other areas uh, where we have to observe certain things where it ma, makes it a little bit more difficult, but, um, we truly appreciate it. Um, the other thing, this, this page just shows some of the different things that we do during the course of the audit. We look at your internal controls. Um, we, um, uh, propose audit adjustments to your books and records if there are any. Uh, there were no material audit adjustments in our, um, in our audit this year. Um, we reconcile cash and investments, um, and make sure you're in compliance with Act seventy-two. Um, cash and investments for us, uh, when you're looking at audit proof, some of our best Um, cash and investments for us, uh, when you're looking at audit proof, some of our best audit proof in the area of cash and investments also in some of your revenues is to get um corroboration of your account balances from outside sources, sources outside the district. Um, that's always some of the best audit evidence, so we do um confirm certain things during the course of the audit. Um, look at major material additions, um, look at your calculation of depreciation expense, which is on your government-wide statements, the really the write-off of the estimated useful life of the asset for each of your different fixed assets. Um, do a search for unrecorded liabilities and use a lot of data extraction tools to try and um, you know, we we obviously can't look at every single transaction, and I always like to to point out, you know, to boards that we're not looking at every single invoice and every single transaction. Um, within the district, we're trying to focus on on um specific risk areas. Um, do use a lot of sampling techniques to sample various account balances. Um, those are just some of the things we do in the course of the audit. What it typically starts anywhere, you know, before the year end in May. Uh, we do some preliminary work, uh, do a lot of our field work in August and September and wrap things up in October, um, so that um the business office can file your annual financial report with the Department of Education. Um, and also get any uh, um, audit reports filed timely for your um Emma requirements for your bond issues and other things. If you go to that last, last slide. Um, these are, this is just really some of the um uh, main numbers over the la- I I just presented the last five years, although um the audit is really for just the the year ended June thirty twenty twenty. Um, I'm just showing your cash and investment balances in there, thirty two million. Uh, that's up from last year. Um, the capital assets were at a hundred and six million. I always like to remind boards that um, you know, those capital assets are the cost of of what you've purchased, various equipment, buildings, you know, that we were, you were just talking in your work session about the budget that you have. Um, you know, for the, for this project going on, whether it comes out at twenty three million, twenty four million. Um, those costs are eventually going to hit this capital asset line item and get written off um, over the estimated useful life of the asset. Uh, so there, there's a a degree of estimation there, but big thing I always like to remind you is it's not liquid cash. It it's an asset, but it's not liquid cash. Um, just showing some of your other things on here, some of your accounts payable and accrued expenses. Uh, your bonds and notes payable for some of your bond issues at the end of the year ended up at sixty six million. Compensated absences was at two point nine million. Compensated absences liability is really your liability for uh vacation time and sick time. Um, other post-employment benefits, there were some changes in that liability over the last couple of years and and in um, a new accounting pronouncement in the way you report that, but um that's really post-employment benefits uh that people are earning now for, you know, benefits that they're going to be um, able to utilize health uh, health insurance after they retire as well as any liability for current retirees. Then your net pension liability, so your net position is a negative ninety million. Last year was a negative hundred million. Um, similar to most school districts across the state, you have a big negative net position on the government-wide statement in that position. Because of your pension liability or your share of the pension liability uh really passed down to you from Peasars. Um, but the fact that your your deficit position on the government-wide statement went down is a positive. Uh, it's not, you know, not the best indicator, but it's one indicator of whether your financial position is staying the same, improving or deteriorating, and I and I think this shows some uh, you know, some improvement. Some of that is because of the market, some of that is because of the you know, the pension liability itself and and, you know, some of the underlying investments. Um, maybe earning good returns relative to, you know, the the uh uh, overall liability that exists out there in the long term. Um, then underneath that, I just showed some various revenues and expenses. I wasn't really gonna go through any in detail, but the the net of of your revenues and expenses on the government-wide is a positive ten million. Um, and really the numbers you focus on, probably more importantly, the governmental funds. Um, you're in particular, your general fund, which is the primary fund of the um, of the district, uh, your fund balance at the end of the year was sixteen million five hundred and thirty thousand, with a net change in fund balance of three point one million. Um, uh, revenues over expenses. Um, and and again, that's a a number that I'm sure you focus on throughout the course of the year. Um, these fund financial statements are more of a short-term focus than than the long-term focus like the government-wide statements that I mentioned above. Um, you know, the the fund statements, at least the governmental fund statements are more of a uh cash-in, cash-out type of, you know, uh, more of a almost the cash basis type of a thing and and similar to the way you budget. Um, so, um, but again, the positive fund balance, I think, is a positive. And and I will just highlight some of that fund balance is the unrestricted piece of the fund balance is only about seven and a half million dollars. Um, so a lot of that general fund balance has been committed by the board or restricted by outside parties. Um, for a particular, you know, for a restricted purpose. Um, so it's it's not all unrestricted fund balance. Um, and then I'm just showing the food service net position at three hundred fifty six thousand. Uh, the change in that position in the food service fund was thirty five thousand, so that's basically your your lunch program and then just showed some uh general expenditures there, but that's, that's the highlight. Um, I think um, from from a uh, uh, really high overview. Uh, always like to remind boards to take a look at the statements, take a look at the management's discussion and analysis. It's a good section provided by management um that uh shows some condensed numbers and shows some fluctuations from one year to the next and why things are going up and down. So that's a a good section that I think you always want to focus on. Um, outside of that, I I I really just appreciate the opportunity to communicate with the board. Um, and and meet with you every year. Um, and I appreciate everything the district staff has done to help us with the audit, but the audit is complete for the June thirty twenty twenty year and um, you know, I, again, I appreciate uh the district's efforts.
Don, this is Tim. Just to be clear, the change in, the net change in fund balance, the three point one seven seven million dollars, that is the surplus that it was for the uh twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal year, correct?
Correct. That is the surplus for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal year. Um, and I I focused more on on the top part of the schedule and the government-wide statements. Um, which are more designed to show the assets and liabilities, all of the assets and liabilities of of the entity and um, you know, the the fund statements are more of a just, you know, short-term focus, but um, yeah, the three point one million is the um current year um, diff- uh, excess.
Thank you.
So, uh, like we normally do, uh, and thank you for the presentation. Now, like we normally do at this time of the year, we also talk about any other uh surpluses uh that we may have had. Mr. Bricker, I think you prepared something to share with the board this evening?
Yes, I did. So I did a review of the uh fund surplus for everyone, so we could go through that and explain where the three point one, three point two million dollars comes from. So let me see if I can get this bigger. I'm not sure if everyone can see this. Does anyone have any issues seeing what's on the screen? Okay, uh, so I'll go through this. So as uh Don mentioned, we had a surplus of about three million dollars, uh, three point two million dollars. Um, revenue was a hundred and eleven point six million dollars, which was two hundred and forty seven thousand eight hundred forty six dollars below budget with expenditures of a hundred and eight point four million dollars, three point four million dollars below budget. And when you put the two together, we have the three point two million dollar uh surplus that we mentioned. Uh, this is primarily driven by our operating expenses, which were not spent through the COVID nineteen, the closure of the school district on March twelfth uh twenty twenty and the savings associated with operating the schools in a virtual versus a traditional setting. When we take a look at the revenue efforts, uh, some of the high contributing areas, uh, delinquent real estate taxes were unfavorable by about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Earned income was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars favorable. Interest income due to the loss of the interest rates that were anticipated and projected in the budget uh caused a shortfall of about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Real estate transfer taxes were stronger, a hundred seven, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the idea of funding, which is uh reimbursements that uh we get from the state or we're we're down by a hundred and three. Obviously, the tuition and adult evening school, we weren't able to run the community ed program. Interim real estate taxes slipped. Uh, refunds in prior years were down. That's more of a figure that changes year to year than COVID-related and receipts from other LEAs were down. And finally, the last one was the uh amusement tax, which went away. This was the sale of the Center Square golf course. Um, there'll be no future revenue and that was removed from future budgets. Overall, local revenue was six, five hundred and sixty four thousand dollars below budget. I presented the top ten. Most of them were impacted by COVID and very, and the other ones be um varied based on external factors. Um, at the end of the day, revenue uh was ninety nine point four percent of budget. On to the next slide, when we look at the state revenue. Overall, the state revenue had a favorable variance of about two hundred and fifty, two thousand dollars. Uh, retirement and social securities were down by about a five hundred thousand dollars combined. This is due to open positions not being filled, uh, mainly due to the anticipated transfers uh that would have been coming in on the uh owner expense side. Uh, subsidies were also uh below budget due to the timing when the figures were approved. Uh, the state by the states, and when they released that information, when we could put that information into the budget. Um, overall, state revenue was that, that should be a hundred points, a hundred and six percent above budget. I apologize. There's a point there in the wrong spot. Uh, going into federal revenue. Federal revenue was about fifty two thousand dollars favorable. Uh, Title One, which was driven by the use is eleven thousand dollars favorable, where Title Two and Title Four came in lower after state made their adjustment. Other CARES Act funding was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars favorable. That is actually driving the federal revenue. That is the grant money that we received due to COVID nineteen. Had that not been there, we would have been below budget on our federal revenue by about ninety eight thousand dollars, and that would have been a direct result of the access, which is the reimbursements we receive. Um, they were lowered, obviously, due to the COVID and not being able to run certain programs that do the reimbursements associated with access. And then the medical claiming, as you'll see at the bottom, was favorable by about ninety six hundred dollars. Getting into the expenditures, when you look at the salaries. Administration salaries were favored by about fifty four thousand dollars uh to budget. Professional staff was only about two hundred and twenty three dollars favorable. Support staff, a hundred and one thousand dollars favorable. Technology unfavorable by ninety six thousand dollars. Uh, facilities was unfavorable by a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars and coach and sponsors pay was about eighty nine thousand dollars favorable. Um, the director of technology position and resignation that occurred during the year fill into the admin. Uh, MBA salaries uh were rated to two hundred and twenty three thousand. This comes into the movement of the funds for substitutes. Um, so that played a role in the salaries. That's the first area that we would move to offset the cost of the, to the subs. Messer favorable by about a hundred and one thousand dollars. This was due to unfilled positions that and positions that were vacated through the fiscal year. Also, the inability to fill them towards the end of the year. Uh, confidential's were unfavorable by ninety two thousand dollars due to a budgeting change, which was the reclassification of an individual. Um, and the facilities was over budget by about a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. This is due to budget transfers initially when the transfers were made to some of their items. Uh, they were uh able to, they were, those items went to different cost. However, we did not anticipate the facility staff coming back the way they did for the COVID when they were done, and then we had the inability to get board approval for certain measures to re undo the budget transfers, uh, again, due to COVID and the lack of being able to meet. Um, so that should not happen again. Um, and then the coaches and sponsors play, we already went over the fact that was from the cancellation of events and programs. Moving into the benefits, we'll see that the benefits align pretty close. Uh, medical insurance was favorable by about fifty, sixty thousand dollars, prescription twenty four five. Uh, eye care was just about right on dental insurance. Um, was a favorable by a hundred and eight. Life insurance, a hundred and nineteen, about nineteen thousand, sorry. Social Security and Retirement discussed this. This is the favorable, uh, this is favorable uh because we did not expend the money associated with that. Uh, again, had we had a full year, these amounts would have moved into the subs, which would have reduced the social security and retirement contributions because, as we said before, when you're not hiring the staff and you're filling in with subs, we'd use the cost associated with those people to uh offset the subs, so we did not double count for that area. Uh, tuition was uh within nine hundred dollars almost. Unemployment base is basically based on use. Uh, we had budgeted a hundred thousand. We had only used forty two thousand. Workers' comp, uh, we anticipated more workers, less at workers' comp than we actually had. I'm sure some of that was related to COVID and or other injuries that occurred at work. Um, the income protection is just more of a timing issues to win that fifty one dollars we could be come in and put out because it's really a pass-through item. And the other benefits that were unanticipated, about forty two thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. If you wanted a next slide, we get into the building expenditures. Most of your buildings would be favorable to their budgets as anticipated. The total is about a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Uh, the high school being enlarged is at fifty two thousand five hundred hours. Uh, clearly, graduation did not happen. Uh, we had outdoor ed that did not happen and a multitude of other areas that uh COVID shutdown had actually been uh canceled some of the events that were planned for the different buildings. Um, also, supplies were not needed, consumables were not needed, and all that would fill into why we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on most of additional expenses saved in uh so the buildings. When we look at the departments, you can see that each of the different departments has certain things. Facilities had a favorable balance of two hundred ten thousand dollars. That goes into the transfer that we spoke about previously. Uh, that would have been removed and gone back into offset a hundred twenty seven thousand dollars. That would have all set. That's, that would have been reduced and come in more in line. Pupil services right here of about six hundred thousand dollars. That's due to the inability to, you know, in a virtual air, in a virtual, there's certain instruction that could not be done with professional services that we needed to hire. Um, but the main driving force in all of our uh surpluses comes down right here. Uh, which is transportation. That's about one point six million dollars of the three point two. Basically, half of our surplus comes into the transportation. Uh, you put in the other six hundred thousands I'd noted up here. Uh, now we're looking at roughly a two point two million dollars of the surplus. Again, when you put in the subs and the other things that have factored into the uh COVID area, um, remind you that when we did our last uh forecast associated with this, we're looking somewhere between an eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollar surplus at the time with the need to still have uh subs come in, which would have reduced that potentially further. So if you put these two items together, I do not believe the surplus would have been nearly as bad as it looks on paper, but a lot of this is main, is driven by COVID. Uh, and this one point six million dollars right here, that is post-paying for fifty percent of the routes associated with for students uh per their request and under payable under the act that the government had provided us the leverage renegotiator contract. We go into the next slide here. We go into debt. Debt real quick, just to go real quick. Let me just sit there and say it was about sixty thousand dollars favorable. The debt comes into the business office right here. So the debt is really associated with the business office right here, but in order to provide clarity on where the debt is, I wanted to break it out for everyone so that you could see where we had debt. So we have two forms of debt. We have a lease, which is associated with the ESCO payments. Prior to having a full amortization schedule, this area was an annual number that was put in. I now have an amortization schedule. I was able to track down from the company and will be, these will be actually even numbers and this variance here will go away. That will not be there in the future. Uh, obviously we hit the principal right on and the interest would have been changed due to the refinancing bond that the board had approved. Otherwise, that pretty much goes in as budgeted and comes out the same way. There's really little short of taking on either new debt or restructuring debt. There's very little variance in those items because they're very predictable for us. Finally, just to give a summary on everything. As I said, we have a three point two million dollar, uh, favorable variance or surplus of that. You know, when you look at the departments, it's two point five, just short of six hundred thousand dollars of that benefits, another seven hundred thousand dollars in variance. So when you're looking right here, that one point six million dollars of transportation is really forcing a lot of this, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars here, again, also COVID related, uh, these benefits right here would have been down much more had we hired the subs and transferred the funds to the subs. That process was working and going along the correct path as we had hoped. Uh, basically, I would believe based on where we were at the forecast, our surplus would have been under a million dollars. Um, but due to COVID, we were significantly impacted. Again, uh, not to keep throwing the transportation, that one point six million dollars, uh, would never be out there had we run the bus as the way we did. Uh, taking on fuel and all the other costs associated with that. And when I say we didn't run the buses, we didn't run the buses for the normal routes. We didn't run the buses for the athletics and we didn't run the buses for any field trips. So all that kind of is how you get to the one point six million dollars. It's not that the amount is that extreme. It's just that we just really didn't run our normal course of action due to COVID closure. And at that point, I can answer any questions that may be there.
Yeah, there are questions for Mr. Bicker or for Don from Mally regarding the overall audit or, uh, specifics on the surplus. Uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Winters?
No, I just want to thank Tim, Tim for putting that together. I know that we, it was very, uh, late in the year that we did that, the, this, this past year, so it's much clearer and, um, I, I guess the earned income, I just want to point out that, uh, the earned income was seven point three million dollars. Um, and I believe from a budget perspective, we put in, um, maybe ten percent, twelve percent less than that for this year's budget.
So based on expectations, we put ten percent less than the, the figure that was provided to us, which was about seven point two million dollars, uh, from Burkeheimer. Uh, that was their original estimate and they, uh, had recommended somewhere between a ten to twenty percent reduction in the, uh, in the, uh, earned income tax. We went with ten, some of the neighboring school districts went with fifteen, some of the very conservative ones went with twenty. Uh, we felt that there was a pretty good ability based on the number of top ten employers in our area that a ten percent reduction would be more in line with reality. In the last update provided by Burkeheimer, that seems to be right about where we're going to be. It's about a ten percent reduction. Obviously, employment, economy and everything can change and impact that drastically.
Yeah. So Tim, I didn't write the difference in the, uh, the earned income element there, but so we were more or less on budget despite the three months of COVID.
Yes, because that runs a little bit in a rear. So the, uh, the first quarter would have been paid in May.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Other questions from members of the board?
I have one quick one in reference to, I think when we looked at the unfavorable for technology, I don't think you explained where that difference came from.
Are you talking the?
I believe you had it on slide number six. No, on slide number six. Where you showed the, um, unfavorable, unfavorable, you showed the facilities and maintenance and also technology. You just passed it. Number six.
Like, no, this is staffing. This was due to a staffing, uh, classification. We had an individual that was not classified in technology. Therefore, when we did the budget, they weren't included in the budget for technology. They correct the, this, this spending was in the right spot. But the budget was not in the right spot for that individual.
Okay.
Other questions from members of the board? Not seeing any other hands. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bicker. Thank you, um, uh, Representative from Mally, uh, for, for your work this evening and your presentation. Uh, again, the, uh, the adoption of the budget will be on for the board's consideration at next Tuesday's meeting. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And it's the adoption of the audit, uh, that we'll have for Tuesday, correct?
Yes. The, the next, uh, the next item on the agenda is administrative staffing recommendations. Bear with me a second till I get that square, get that set up. So this evening I want to present, uh, my administrative staffing recommendations for the board's consideration. Here's a partial representation of the top level of the organizational chart as approved on eleven twenty-six, two thousand nineteen by the board, showing the nine elected board of school directors, the superintendent and the department directors. Under the directors, you, uh, not shown on the chart here, but is typically found, you, will be the, uh, level supervisors and the program supervisors on the building principals. This for all intents and purposes is a pretty flat, uh, organizational structure. In terms of, uh, challenges, uh, COVID nineteen has been a significant challenge to the work that we do. Every decision is new. There is very little that we can reach back in our experiences to make determinations. There is a greater need for communication to staff, greater need for communication to our parents and to the community. And there is a need to make decisions on a more timely basis. The whole COVID matter has exasperated an already slim administrative team. Our ability to manage, uh, with the open post is, is not working. So let me just talk about that for a, a few seconds. Uh, we certainly, uh, created an office of diversity, equity and inclusion, and we just, you know, having just created this, we've also made need to make a very thoughtful and appropriate determination as how to best staff this in order to realize some, uh, appropriate change. We have had an ad hoc committee of the board working with me and tonight I hope to, to share our recommendation. Assistant Superintendent, we've been talking about this post for about seven years. And I, I must tell you that I cannot do the things that our community demands, uh, without some assistance. Uh, we need to post in, uh, this, uh, and fill this position immediately. Secondary curriculum supervisor, we established this post more than a year ago, staffed the post and had certain matters delay the implementation. We kept a position on the books, but did not allocate budget dollars for this position in the twenty twenty-one, uh, school year in order to make our targeted reductions. And technology director. I, I gotta say, uh, thank goodness, uh, that we moved, moved Dr. Landis to the technology office when we did. Just a month after that move, COVID hit. And while technology has not been perfect, I commend Dr. Landis for her leadership and for all the efforts that she's made to date. But in terms of addressing, uh, these areas, many of us, including myself, have taken on some aspects of all of these roles. And it is not only challenging, but to be quite frank, it's nearly exhausting. In terms of the structure, uh, and duties and tasks, one of the key elements to a successful people-based organization is having appropriate supervision and evaluation of staff. To be able to provide the mechanisms and the time to attract, keep and grow the staff at all levels. COVID and the vacant positions, uh, places me in the middle of handling many day-to-day matters that simply should not be at my level. This takes away from the strategic planning, the visioning, communications and a number of other matters that are crucial for moving this district forward. We need more focus on organizational development, school improvement and student growth, employee relations and morale. In fact, part of what we continually face is the fact that, uh, with absorbing all these additional responsibilities that would be done, done other, by otherwise by other individuals, we struggle with timely communications to our staff to getting our professional development schedule well in advance, uh, to our teachers. And really the list goes on. We cannot simply do better by continuing to do the same things. So this evening, my recommendations will address the administrative structural duties and task challenges. Will provide more effective, efficient, timely support to building administrators and staff. Will provide a focused and consistent strategic improvement, planning, implementation efforts. And will place the emphasis on people as a, as the greatest organizational assets. My first recommendation, in order to move, uh, this organization forward and to address the challenges that I've shared. It's important that the, uh, the district consider allowing me to continue the work with the ad hoc, uh, committee of the board. But also as part of that work to date, engage a gentleman by the name of Dr. Bruce Campbell. And Bruce, Dr. Campbell, uh, has done a number of, uh, of consulting engagements on the matter of diversity, equity, inclusion around Montgomery County, but across the whole Commonwealth. And he is currently a professor, uh, at, 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 uh, one of our local universities. And we know that from speaking with him and the proposal that he has shared with us that we can move forward in allowing him to assist us in developing a diversity and inclusion committee. Developing and facilitating an equity audit for the district. To facilitate monthly diversity and inclusion committee meetings and assist in directing diversity, inclusion committee subgroups. As well as assist in developing an action plan, uh, for the leadership and staffing of our DEI office. So if it is the, the, uh, will of the board to, uh, accept, uh, recommendation one, I have a proposal that I've received from, uh, a Dr. Campbell. It's been reviewed by the ad hoc committee. And, um, if, uh, if there is no objection to it this evening, I'd like to be able to put that, uh, proposal on the agenda for consideration, uh, for next Tuesday's, uh, meeting. We can certainly, uh, you know, invite, uh, Dr. Campbell if, if that's, uh, uh, a recommendation of the board. But I know that our, our ad hoc committee has already met with him. And I, I also understand that, uh, the local, uh, DEI task force within the Mathacton community has met with, uh, Dr. Campbell. And I believe that they are also equally impressed by his credentials and his ability to, uh, uh, to potentially support, uh, the Mathacton School District. The next recommendation, in order to move this organization forward and to address the challenges that I've shared, I'm recommending Mr. Che Regina be appointed uh, by the board to the position of assistant superintendent effective January one, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Regina is a trusted, competent, knowledgeable and respected administrator. His work over the past several years, along with his previous work experiences, make him the most appropriate for this role where he will handle the day-to-day matters, staff discipline, lead the supervision and evaluation of all staff. Be our title line coordinator, our school safety officer and be the administrator in charge in the absence of myself, the superintendent. Recommendation number three. Considering that the assistant superintendent is appointed as recommended, there will be a need to replace Mr. Regina in human resources office. This position will handle all the HR matters and take on the responsibility as the right to know officer in the district. The fourth recommendation. Keeping true to the reason that this position was established in the first place, being our fundamental mission is to educate students. And we do that through the use of our curriculum and through the leadership of our principals and the instruction provided by our teachers who need the proper support to provide an effective, efficient and timely curriculum, uh, delivery at all levels. We need to advertise for this position. I would like the board to give me permission to advertise and present for their consideration in January of twenty twenty-one. A candidate for the supervisor of secondary curriculum. While this job description has not changed, I will, if this is approved, change, uh, change to, uh, a recommended change to have all professional development be run by both the supervisors. That's a supervisor of elementary instruction and the supervisor of secondary instruction in conjunction with the building principles. And change the title of, of the duties of the supervisor of professional learning and continuous improvement to the supervisor of continuous improvement. By also adding to them, uh, the responsibilities of, uh, data management, the, uh, PIMS reporting and the state reporting responsibilities. And the, uh, the, 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 the last recommendation, uh, that I have for you this evening is in March of twenty twenty-one, assuming that all the other recommendations, uh, have been, uh, established and, and, uh, moved forward. Uh, I will come back and ask, uh, for the, uh, the board to allow me to advertise for the replacement in the technology office with an appointment due in May and, and June of twenty twenty-one. In terms of the organizational chart, uh, we take the existing chart in its entirety. Um, and, uh, notice that, uh, we're adding one element, uh, to the overall structure. That is to, uh, provide, uh, a, a little bit more hierarchy in the, in the structure and the reporting process where the director of human resources will report to the assistant superintendent and the assistant superintendent and I will, will directly supervise the building principles in the district. The timeline for this in November, uh, I, I'd like to, uh, ha- a- ask for the approval of Mr. Che Regina for the assistant superintendent, and I believe that this will then, uh, perpetuate all the other pieces as recommended. Uh, we would then go, go to advertise for the replacement of the director of human resources. And then we would advertise for the position of supervisor of secondary, uh, uh, curriculum with a target appointment for the HR director and the supervisor for January of twenty twenty-one. And then again, in March of twenty twenty-one, uh, ask for the advertisement of the technology operations supervisor with a targeted appointment in May and June. In terms of the financials, it is projected, uh, with these recommendations that the impact to the budget on the, for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year uh, beginning January one is, uh, projected to be, uh, in total, both benefits and salaries and consulting fee of three hundred and eight thousand, uh, twenty-seven dollars. That includes thirty, thirty thousand dollars for the DEI consultant fee. As, uh, as, as, uh, as outlined in the proposal from, uh, Dr. Campbell. A hundred and eighty thousand, uh, for the assistant superintendent, a hundred and fifty thousand for the director of human resources and an estimate of a hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, uh, second, uh, secondary, uh, curriculum supervisor. And then for projected twenty twenty-one fiscal year and forward cost, it'd be projected about six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in salary and benefits inclusive of a hundred and twelve thousand dollar technology supervisor position. So our impact to the budget, uh, in, in the long term is about six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Now, now recall, these were positions that, uh, some of these were positions that we had in the budget, uh, in, in previous years. And as part of our budgetary, uh, process this past year, uh, we made some, some decisions and I made some recommendations uh, to think that we could do away, uh, or, 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 or I'll say pause on the, on filling those positions. But as I mentioned under the challenges, it's become rather clear that, you know, with COVID and with all the stuff that is, is new to us. Uh, like it's new to in every other industry, uh, it's just, it's just not going to be sustainable. Um, if we keep going, uh, in the direction that we're going and asking, uh, everyone, including myself, uh, to spend all their waking hours working. And, and I, and I mean that, I know that sounds maybe silly, but, uh, you can ask any of the directors on this call. Um, you know, they, they've, they've given, uh, more than their. You know, they've given more than their their appropriate time for the things that we need to do, both evenings and weekends. And you know, we're really in a position where this is an opportunity not only to address those challenges, but to allow us to help ourselves and move the district forward. With that said, I presented this here this evening, and I'm seeking any other feedback and permission from the board to put four of the five recommendations, all of them except for the technology one, on the agenda for your consideration next Tuesday. So with that said, I'll open the floor up to some questions. Any questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Only one talking tonight, I guess. I think Dr. Zerby should be recommended for, I support these, I have one question here, but I do believe, I know my experiences at work, the stress that is put on the workplace and people trying to keep their head up, no matter if they're a teacher, if they're an accountant, or whatever they're doing, the stress is on is on all of us. The the staff and all those employed by Methacton have stepped up through this process. But I think your ability to acknowledge that there is some needs here, increasing the trust and the respect and the effectiveness of all the interactions, and the recommendation of putting a strong individual like Che into the process to support that is what we need in the district. So I support that. I, the one question I had was on, could you comment related to the Director of Human Resources? Was that an internal and external, or just an external? And if it was just external, what was the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, in the in the presentation and as part of my recommendation, I believe that the the positions being recommended for advertisement, both internally and externally. And I and I say that because there may, there may be, there's not an apparent individual within the organization that I am aware of at this moment in time that could jump into an HR position. But certainly, there are some individuals that might be interested in that, that have that have served in other administrative roles that could learn from, for example, from Mr. Regina as part of that process. But we also recognize that there may be some individuals, you know, outside of our organization that could come with those skills already in place and be able to allow us to hit the ground running right away. You know, one of the things that we we need to be very cognizant of is making sure that part of the challenge is making sure that we provide opportunities for our staff internally. And one of the things that I shared in the presentation was that in terms of the supervisor of a secondary curriculum, my recommendation is we advertise that internally. There are, there are clearly, in my opinion, a number of individuals that are quite capable and hopefully are willing to step up to the next level of administrative responsibility to take on that role. And we'd be a great asset to Dr. Walsh's team.
Thank you.
Other questions, members of the board?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your candor. You know, you 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 said some very important things, that's communication with staff, et cetera. I will reiterate what Paul said, you know, everybody's working harder from A to Z. But I did also want to reiterate what you said about the fact that because we were trying to get our budget within a certain number, we didn't fulfill some of these fill some of these positions. And, you know, hindsight's always twenty twenty, you know, administrators, no offense, are expensive. So that was easy to to cut, and you think it affects children, the all top.
Ms. Reese, just so you know, at my end, you were breaking up, so I didn't hear everything that you said. But I would like to comment on the stuff that I did here. And the one thing that you mentioned was, you know, I have to take some responsibility for these positions not being filled because I did make the recommendation as part of the budget, assuming that, like we've done in the past, we've taken a position where instead of allowing budget cuts to affect students directly into the classroom by either not purchasing equipment, supplies, or other things, we've we've tried to cut back in the administrative realm in order to, you know, meet meet a target budget amount without without impacting children directly. And while we've done that over a number of years and that has worked, it is quite clear and obvious that with COVID added to this whole challenge, it's showing, it's showing some of the shortcomings of being able to fill in all those spots. You know, not not only for myself, but others who have been filling in. So while those positions aren't filled, Dr. Angstad, Mr. Regina, myself, Mr. Bricker, like we're all pulling, you know, additional weight that would normally be done by other individuals. And and we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna move this organization forward with that type of, that type of effort. It's just either people will go and leave and, or, you know, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll burn out and they'll be, they'll leave for, you know, medical reasons or something of that nature. So I'm not trying to paint a grim picture here. I'm just saying that, you know, I need your help, and I think this district deserves better. I think you know that we can do better, and we can do better if we have a stronger team. And, you know, we are part of, part of, you know, making this recommendation gets Mr. Regina into the spot that we need him to focus in on making people first. And by making people first, we fill in these other spots that make us a stronger team. And and not only for, you know, you know, reporting processes to the board and to the community, but all the way down to the teacher level. By us being more effective and central and being more communicative, communicative and central, it makes the lives of our principals and teachers that much better. So so I ask that you allow us to move forward with this. So other comments, questions from members of the board?
The only other thing I'll say is, I know what a great job Mr. Regina has done, but I was not part of his hiring. So I needed to be remembered of his resume, his teaching experience, his principal experience, his director of athletics experience. So again, I support this, and I look forward to hopefully this going through.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Other questions or comments? Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. I just wanted to reiterate something that came up when you and I were discussing this that maybe not everybody on the call would necessarily know. And that is that a lot of districts of our size have an assistant superintendent. So while this is something that is new to Methacton, it is not unusual for a district of our size to have an assistant superintendent. And in fact, I think it's more unusual that we have not had one previously. I don't know if we've ever had an assistant superintendent.
About ten years.
We had superintendent, but
There was, yeah, there was, there was one ten years ago.
Okay, so yeah, we're well overdue to fill this position. And I know it is something that we have talked about many times over the five years that I've been on the board. And quite honestly, I feel like Mr. Regina came along at just the right time to our district and is the perfect individual to step into this role. So I'm really happy that we have him and that we're able to to really use his talents in a new and exciting way. So I fully support that.
Thank you, Madam President. Other comments from members of the of the board or questions? Ms. Hall?
Well, thank you first for all the work on this presentation. And I do think that these administrative changes are needed at this point because we've seen the struggle that we've had in dealing with many different issues. But I did want to ask, in, I'm not sure if the correct attachment was included with the agenda tonight, but I just want a clarification because it says on the Director of Human Resources that it requires a PA certification for superintendent or assistant superintendent. I was not certain if that was correct or not.
We'll review, we'll review that and take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Gangrel?
All I wanted to do was just say that I am also in favor of this. I think it's something we need to do to move forward, to strengthen our district. I think I've seen all of you work extremely hard. And I think one of the biggest things is hearing from staff and principals that they need hands-on, they want to be heard, they want to carry through what they want to do. So to help develop our staff, develop our leadership, I do believe that Mr. Regina would be a perfect person to take on that role. What he's brought to our district has elevated us so quickly to have open communication with our district employees. And I think it will allow us to really have more hands-on for coaching and development. And what we've always wanted to do is strive to educational excellence. So I support this, and I'm glad that we're going to move forward with these positions.
Thank you, Ms. Gangrel. Appreciate your comments. Other, any, any other comments or questions? Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, could you just speak a little more, please, about the the data work that is going to be done with some of the professional development now being done under the curriculum directors?
Yeah, I think, I think what's most critical in terms of the responsibilities associated with professional development is that the the principals and the supervisors for the appropriate levels work together to ensure that the proper types and and areas of professional development are delivered, planned, communicated, and implemented in a timely and effective manner. Certainly, for a long time, we've had, we've had one person in charge of professional development. And then, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a larger task for one person to, to manage in terms of all that process. But equally important to the professional development is the fact that we are reassigning the person within the current position as Supervisor of Professional Learning and Continuous Improvement to the overall oversight of our data and PIMS reporting. And quite frankly, I, it may not be readily apparent to folks, but the reporting and the accuracy of that reporting has a significant impact on things like our, our, our district ranking or our school rankings. When those things, while over the years, we've made corrections to some reports from, from time to time, those corrections don't necessarily get reflected in a, in a press release for a, a ranking determination. So it's almost, you know, years in the, in the, in the, in the back. So I know that might be more information than you were asking for, but I wanted you to know that having the supervisors and the principals at their respective levels collectively plan for the professional development and with respects to the Act Forty Eight Committee and also with, with the teachers at their appropriate level under the direction of Dr. Walsh will allow us to be more effective and efficient and more timely for the needs at those respective levels.
Thank you. That actually, that is what I was looking for. And I know from my time on the Act Forty Eight Committee that sometimes the professional development, the feedback is that, you know, sometimes it's more applicable to certain levels and not others as much. So I think this is, this is good going forward, that we're going to make sure it's tailored to the needs that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, and I must say that, you know, a lot of the supervisor of curriculum recommendation is also, you know, strongly supported by our new Director of Curriculum, Dr. Walsh. Certainly, you know, being able to actually direct versus doing a lot of the elementary or secondary work will be instrumental to, you know, making and moving our district forward and improving not only student growth and performance, but also matters of like, like district ranking and so forth. So, you know, there, there's, there's some subtle but very important subsequent matters by making these changes that will be positive for the district. Other questions, comments? Not seeing any, oh, Mr. Neverett?
Thanks. I guess, thank you, I guess, to reiterate what Andrea and Paul said. I appreciate your candor in coming forward with this. Certainly, I know we talk about COVID and how that exacerbated the situation, but I think it's important to realize that this administration team was already operating lean. And it's, and quite honestly, it's remarkable what they've gotten done with the team that we've had. And I know I sound like a broken record when I say this because I know the rest of this board, and you have heard this before that. But when, you know, when I walked onto this board in day one and we did our, our tours and we met with each of the individual departments, I was shocked at how few people there are specifically in the area curriculum. So I'm glad that we're taking the steps forward to address some of the shortcomings in the administrative team because I think that probably has a lot more to do with the, the rankings that people talk about, things, reconfigurations. From the top, I'm glad we're addressing, I'm glad we're taking the first steps forward towards filling the DEI office. And Samir and Liz and I have had more than a couple discussions with Dr. Campbell and with the DEI Task Force. Personally, I think it would be good for him to come and present to us and talk about exactly what it is that he plans to do. I know, again, Liz and Samir and I have heard it multiple times, and I'm entirely comfortable with what he's going to do. But I think it'd be good not only for the board, but the administration and the public to hear exactly what we want to address there and how we plan about going about that. With this Assistant Superintendent is concerned, you know, Che, I couldn't be more thrilled to have you here on a more permanent basis and in this role. We've heard nothing but glowing things about you since the day you walked in. And, you know, I think, I think probably the most important thing that Dr. Zerby talked about is that trust. So I'm glad that, hopefully, we can get this, we can get this done and have you here in this Assistant Superintendent role. The role itself is something that I think we've all identified has been vacant for a long time. And then when we get to supervisor secondary curriculum, I'm glad we're going to fill this position. Are there any more, I guess, changes or restructuring? I know, I know Matt's only been here for, what, two months now, a month and a half? I'm sure he's going to have ideas as we move forward and certainly get into the, hopefully, transition soon into non-COVID times. But do we expect more, more changes on that front from the curriculum department?
Well, I think part, part of our conversation is how we best leverage the curriculum coordinators and the, and the department coordinators across the district. Certainly, they, in, in, in my conversations with Dr. Walsh, they are really a resource that, you know, has a much greater potential than, than what maybe we've been leveraging them for. And and I think he's trying to ascertain what it is that they've been responsible for doing and how better to leverage their expertise in supporting the curriculum office. Because when it's all said and done, they are, you know, the teachers in the classrooms, they are the, the ones that, you know, will, will get the work done. And certainly, you know, having them in, as a critical aspect in their conversations about what we do and how we do it are going to be instrumental to getting it done.
Thanks. I'll just add that I'm glad we're going to, we're looking to fill this position internally again because I think that in itself opens up a lot of doors within the organization for others. And I think it's important that teachers and principals and specialists all see that there is a progression here within Methacton for them here, that we want to keep our good talent here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neverett. Are there any other comments or questions before we move on to the next item on the agenda? So hearing no objections at this point, I'm going to add these recommendations, the four of the five, to the agenda for your consideration at next Tuesday's voting meeting. Hearing no, no objections on that, we'll, we'll do that. The next item that I have on the agenda is athletics, activities, and facilities use discussion. When I originally placed this on the agenda, this was back on, on the twelfth of just bear with me, this was back on the twelfth. And if you remember, on the twelfth, I sent a letter to all Methacton families indicating that in an effort to mitigate the trending increases in COVID nineteen positivity and incident rates in Montgomery County and especially among our families in lower Providence and Westchester Townships, I was issuing a notice to all the families that, beginning on Monday, November sixteenth, and through December sixth, that all students in all the different groupings will receive instruction. that all students in all the different groupings will receive instruction online. With that said, I also went into some of the specifics about why that, that was. And I'd like to share with you why, why, why some of those specifics and kind of an update to some of that as well. And then that'll lead us into the conversation about athletics, activities, facility and facilities use discussion. So, you know, I came to that conclusion based on the mitigation measures presented and on, on the 12th and then eventually enacted on the 13th by the Montgomery County Department of Health, requiring all Montgomery County schools, both private and public to revert to online learning right before the Thanksgiving holiday. So that's starting November 23rd through December 6th. And then also the fact that Mathacton School District has had only one week of its in-person on-premise hybrid instruction, meaning that we were doing the, I'll call it the phase-in approach. And at the same time, the fact that Mathacton School District's two town, townships combined had the highest COVID 19 rates in Montgomery County. And just to be more specific about that, for the two-week period, period prior, Mathacton's positivity rate was 8.2% with an incident rate of, of, at the same time of 114.6 per 100,000. The county was at a 5.2% and a 106.9% per 100,000 respectively. So while, while the county was, was rising, we were rising at, 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 at almost two possibly, or actually three percentage points higher in terms of positivity and nearly, you know, you know, you know, 10 additional percent by, respectively for the incident rate. And it certainly was clear to us that the county and the local rates were escalating over the, over the past three weeks. We, we created that data dashboard and we have the, the chart showing, you know, where that's going. And that, that data comes from the county directly. And furthermore, at the time of the decision on the 12th, we knew that the daily positivity rate in the county was a little over 11%. So based on, on what the CHOP doctors were telling us at a meeting with the superintendents in Montgomery County is that it's only a matter of time before we get beyond our 10% threshold that we had established for ourselves as, as a chart with, from, from PDE to, to move to all online instruction. Now, the problem was, you, you know, us in, in, in our estimate and talking with the county, we were about a week, a week and a half ahead in terms of positivity and, and incident increases compared to our neighboring districts and to the county as a whole. So the fact that, you know, we, we, we had the substantial range for two consecutive weeks as, as we had in our approved health and safety plan. And the fact that the county and the district-specific data trajectory is, was poised, was poised to be off the chart in about another week. The fact that we had 10 positive cases at that time, we now have, if you've noticed, there was an update today to our data dashboard. We now have a total of 19 cases. And that means there's three staff members and 16 students. And the fact that our staff are either self-reporting symptoms, they are in quarantine or in isolation, making it very challenging to operate daily. And, and while we're at it, Mr. Regina, I, I think you have a summary that you can show with the board about some of that, those staffing challenges, if you would, please.
Sure. I, I, I think that the timeline of the way things occurred, just quickly, as we were looking at the middle of the summer, what we had recognized was there was, the onset of this was a, a medical and FMLA concerns. There was a, certainly a fear associated with coming back. There were a number of individuals that were concerned about that. And as we shifted into the start of the school year, it became more of an, we still had the medical concern, but then FF-CRA started to play a factor, which essentially was FF-CRA number five is essentially related to childcare. And schools that would be either in hybrid or online would be offering, we would be able to offer FF-CRA. What we're falling into now is, and what we recognized last week, really quarantine started to play a major role in our staffing issues. So as, as you can see, and the other ones don't ever go away. So, so this has kind of been a, certainly a waterfall approach to some of the concerns that we had. To date, we had 51 individuals that have requested leave in the district, and that's both support and professional staff, 20 of which were FF-CRA requests and FF-CRA number five requests. Remember, at this moment in time, FF-CRA, it will conclude December 31st. That, that is provided that there is no extension. It is a federal law, so it would, it would have to be a, a federal extension for us to still utilize FF-CRA. Of those 51, 48 individuals requested telework. 41 of those individuals were approved to telework if we were, were not able to find a substitute. 21 of those individuals did not require a substitute for their position. So for instance, it might have been an individual that was co-teaching. We could keep one individual online while the other individual was in person. So we, we tried to manage that the best we could. So that leaves 30 positions that were required for a substitute and a proctor. At the start of this, we had 16 substitutes. As you can imagine, the substitute battle was quite difficult amongst the districts. There is, happens to be, I would say probably the closest thing to a bidding war for substitutes that I've ever seen before in my career. And, and substitutes, to be quite honest, were, were at a premium and they still are. And we, we left with 14 unfilled positions and, and when we started last Monday. And essentially what we did was we used large group areas. We used coverages of our existing staff. And then we got very creative with some of our support staff and administrative staff to help with that coverage as well. And that's where we are today. Thanks.
And, and just to, you know, in, in all disclosure, we actually use, started, we started to dive into using central administration staff. Is that right, Mr. Regina?
That, that is, that is correct.
So, yeah, so, you know, it was, it was certainly, you know, a, a challenging period of time. So my, my main concern about that, that process was that, you know, I had to consider knowing that the county was going to make a recommendation to go all virtual starting the 23rd. I had, I met with my administrative team and we discussed what what the inherent value will be to continuing this path, knowing all that we know in terms of the increase in positivity and, and incident rates, as well as the challenging, challenges with staff were likely to continue. And, and the fact that we, we were already dipping into using some central administrative staff in order to be proctors. It, it just, it just appeared to be a, a, a much more appropriate response by, from, from us as, as a district to revert to online learning an extra week ahead of, of the rest of the county schools. And the, and the reason for that, not only, not only from what I've shared, but my hope is that, as, as per the CHOP doctors have, have consulted with us on, you know, if, if it, if it took three weeks to get into, you know, spiking, it, it's going to take, you know, four to five weeks to get out of that. And, and, and so, you know, we were, we were much further ahead in terms of our, our incident rates and our positivity rate, we're going to need more time to get down to a better level. So that was, you know, another thing that, that I considered as part of that, that decision-making. So some of the, the other key aspect to all of this is that the county has indicated that on December 2nd, the county health department will provide an update to the mandatory virtual instructional requirement. So while we went a week earlier, we also are going to be doing the all virtual, you know, you know, following the mandates from the, the county health department. On the agenda for this evening was the athletics and activities for the board, for the board discussion. We can certainly talk about athletics and activities, but given that the county mandate also restricts the in-person athletics and in-person activities for the same period of time, I felt it reasonable for us to, at the very least, take up the conversation about the use of facilities only. And then allow for, you know, where the county health department goes, where we see things going from the PIAA and, you know, continuing with our, our health and safety plan that the board approved, unless, you know, some other things so suggest that we should do otherwise. And then keep the, the board apprised of that. So, so basically what I think is important for the board to understand is that these, these next two weeks, our facilities, especially over the Thanksgiving holiday are, are used heavily, primarily by community organizations that provide recreational youth athletics, particularly basketball, to school-age children within our community. And with, and, and while we have other activities like swimming and, and, and so forth, that is, that is run by other outside groups and we've approved the use of those things at a previous meeting. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm, I'm giving whatever direction that the board wants me to go in here. It's like, how do we, how do we proceed forward over this period? There isn't, it isn't clear to me that the use of facilities is restricted by this order, nor is the use, or the, the restriction by groups like ARA and, and the MAC are, are, it doesn't appear to me that those things are restricted during this period of time. And some of the things that we would, would want to consider is what we're doing right now in terms of, of this is a mitigation strategy. The idea being that we're taking reasonable steps to help reduce the, the likelihood of, of continuous spread. I, I don't know if I'm certainly in, in a position to recommend that we stop everything that, that we are doing as, as a district. But I also know that part of my obligation is to, you know, share this concern because A, I certainly don't want to not provide access to these outside groups. But if the board feels that we should, I certainly will. One of the challenges is that this period of time is probably, and given the fact that schools will all be online, this is the only period of time that these outside groups, you know, will, will be able to have another outlet other than being at home. But certainly it's clear that the, the rise in rates is not due to what is going on in schools. Our rise in rates higher than other county districts has nothing to do with our, our schools. So it has everything to do with, you know, what else is going on outside in the community, whether, according to, to the CHOP doctors and to our, our county health department who do all the contact tracing, they're saying things like carpooling, you know, you know, you know, neighborhood events. Things that are happening outside of, of the activity. So, so, you know, the statements that are shared with us is, you know, it's not the, it's not the sport of, of playing basketball. It's the gatherings after playing basketball that are, are causing the, the, the challenges. And that's what they're seeing through the, the social tracing process. So I've said a lot, I, I think we should open the floor up to some questions and conversation. Just trying to get some idea so that I can provide appropriate direction on this and, and communication to our, our outside groups. Or, or we can certainly talk about athletics and activities as well. So yeah, Ms. Reese?
I was going to say a couple of things. One is just to reiterate what we said about, about schools. You know, we got some, some nasty comments and, and, and disappointed emails about the closing, but we had no choice. And we're not going to reiterate your letter and what you said tonight, but I did want to reiterate as an educator that I first had students last Thursday in where I teach, for the first time in person. And on my very first day of teaching in person, I had to go cover for a teacher who was quarantined. So this is real. It's very, very hard to run a school without the staff that works in the school. So I just wanted to reiterate that again because I'm living it. And although I'm very pleased I can see my students this week, I understand why I cannot see them next week. As far as the athletics, let's go there first. I think we have to wait for PIAA, just like we have all along. I will say that I'm very proud of our families of fall sports. If you think about it, we, and I'm not saying we're, you know, we're the best, woo-hoo, but we did an excellent job during the fall with our sports. We, our families, our coaches, our student athletes did an incredible job from our COLA on up to the high school. So I think that that is notable and commendable. As far as winner, the win, winner PIAA sports for schools, like I said, I think we need to wait for PIAA. They've already, not already, but they did go from November 20th to November 30th, and they did that for multitude of reasons. So we'll see what happens. As far as the use of our facilities, you know, we go to that whole mental health aspect. And as long as those people are following the rules, I would like us to continue to share those facilities because they're already following the rules. Now, as you said, who knows what's happening after? But they are following the rules in our buildings because we've seen it. So I would personally, as long as the county, like they haven't stopped the use of gyms and things like that. As long as they're following the guidelines, I would like to see our facilities be used. Because we have the custodians in place, we have the safeguards in place, and there isn't staffing issues and those kinds of issues that we're also dealing with. That's my personal opinion. But for the mental health of the, of people involved, I think it's, as long as we can do it, we should do it. I know that that may not be able to go on forever. Hopefully these other mitigating, mitigating procedures in place will help that to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, for your feedback. I appreciate that. Are there any other comments or, or feedback? Direction, Ms. Reese, or Ms. Aubie Larsonis?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, this is not the direction that we had thought this conversation was going to be going when we first talked about putting it on the agenda. I have a couple of questions about the use of our facilities for outside groups. And I, forgive me if we've talked about this, but we've talked about it a lot in 2020, so I can't possibly retain all of it every time. But are we, have we changed the way that we are scheduling the use of our facilities for outside groups? For example, are we allowing, if we have, for example, ARA using a, a gym, followed by another group using the gym, are we allowing for more time in between those, those bookings? Or are we booking groups back to back?
Mr. Jones, can you help me with that?
Yes. Right now, we just have individual groups. So typically in the evening, it's ARA. And then also on the weekends in some of the schools, we have another organization there, but they are not cohabitating or back to back.
Okay. So we, but we also then don't necessarily know because it's up to each individual organization. So for example, if ARA has a gym booked for three hours and they have three or four different teams coming through, we don't know how they're scheduling it to. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm assuming that as part of their COVID plan, they, they are allowing for transition time so that we don't have too many people in the facilities at a time. But
They, they have been following the numbers exactly. So we've had no issues with them having too many people in the building at one time.
Okay. So we're monitoring that closely. Good. That's good to hear. So then, the other thing that I was, I was thinking with this is that rather than assume that the county has not restricted the use of the facilities for outside groups and that the continuation of athletics, I, I think we should seek clarification. I, I don't want to put us in a, a situation where we are abruptly having to put things to an end because of a communication from the county. I would rather find out on the front end and be able to handle it appropriately.
I can do that.
And I know we don't have a whole lot of attendees in the meeting tonight, but I, I want to reiterate, as I think we've talked about many times before, that we need to, as a community, be doing everything in our power to try to slow the spread of COVID. We need to be wearing masks. We need to be practicing social distancing. I know everyone's tired of hearing it. Everybody's tired of talking about it, myself included. It's, it, we've heard from the CHOP doctors over and over again, it is not the activities the, that are being, these activities are carefully planned, carefully monitored. I have seen it firsthand and up close. The, the, the kids aren't getting COVID on the, the playing field. It's the stuff before practice. It's the stuff after practice. It's the sleepovers on the weekends. It's the birthday parties that are still continuing to happen. And I'm, I'm seeing it more and more. And Sleepovers on the weekends, it's the birthday parties that are still continuing to happen and I'm I'm seeing it more and more and. Um it's got to stop. If we want to be able to keep our kids involved in any sort of activity. Um and I I do believe it's very critical for their mental health to be able to to find these ways to socialize and be with each other. Um we have to follow the protocols and we have to be vigilant. Um I also. I'm concerned that there is a slippery slope that develops and I I say this having fallen a little bit down this slope myself. There is a false sense of safety that I think we we get into where. Um we feel like because our children are together for an activity, say they're on the same sports team. Well, then it's okay for them to get together on the weekend and and hang out because while they're already seeing each other at sports. Um I think that that the school environment, there's, this is purely my speculation, could be creating the same sort of a a scenario. With um some districts and some schools going back to in-person learning that there's a sense of. You know, you've expanded your bubble, the you see these kids in school, you see these kids at practice, so therefore you can get together on the weekends and socialize. Um and I have felt myself starting to to think that same way about my own kids. Um but I think it's it's a dangerous road to go down and I think that um as hard as it is to say no to our kids. Um i- it's for everybody's safety that we do so. So I think these organized activities. That are are monitored and structured and and are run in a as safe a way as possible are the way to go. Um that the other stuff, the the get-togethers at at people's houses on the weekends. Um that the things like that that are still persisting in the community, that that's where we have to be more vigilant. We have to to scale back. We have to. We have to be more cautious. Um. So yes, I think that as long as we're continuing to to monitor the situation and again, check in with the county. To make sure that that this, you know, I I I think we need to clarify with them that this is okay.
Yeah, I I I certainly can do that.
The only thing, oh sorry, the only thing I'll add, I can't speak for A R A because my child has not started with A R A yet. My other one aged out, but I can speak for MAC that they, in answer to your question, Kim, they um have fit. They have fifteen minutes before between each group. Um just because they are following incredibly strict guidelines and I would imagine so is the other, but I don't want to speak for that. But I know that they had to submit a plan. So I did want to say that um. MAC certainly has fifteen minutes between each.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's something that F C Monco has done um all season long, but I, you know, I I don't know what the the different organizations are doing when they're indoors. Um so I'm just kind of double checking that one.
Yeah, and 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 I know that there there may be, you know, even more opinions on this conversation and I think that maybe if I could, so we've had. We had Ms. Reese and Ms. Aubrey Larsonis speak on the fact that, you know, we keep these uh 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 facilities open. Uh are there, are there any objections to to that, uh assuming that the county, after I check with the county, is still okay? And that's, I I mean, if there's no other objections to kind of moving forward in that direction, then uh you know, I'll I'll we'll we'll keep down that path. Uh Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, just a quick uh kind of following Kim's, just to make sure. Uh you mentioned that, you know, the kind of doors swing wide open over Thanksgiving traditionally. Um we're not having any uh. Abnormally large multi-team tournament events anywhere on our uh facilities or anything like that. Are are we still maintaining just, I'll call the A R A, the 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 current customers? That's one thing I would like to make sure that we've checked the schedule, that there's no large uh group uh multi-team tournaments that are. Planning on using our places, that's all.
Uh Mr. Jones, do you have any in response to that?
Yeah, at this, at this point in time, you are correct. We do not have any large organizations and we're getting. Getting ready to get back to them in reference to what we are going to allow after Thanksgiving. So. Once we have this conversation, Dr. Zerbi confirms with the county, we will be contacting them the end of this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Uh yeah, uh Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, just to add to that, I don't have any objection, but I do want to ask that, you know, we've said this before when we proved the health and safety plan, but. We have to have strict adherence to the numbers limits that we set forth previously. You know, that makes it tougher basketball because we're talking about ten kids on a team and a couple of coaches and referees, but. Um and that probably means parents can't get in the gym to see their kids play, but if we're truly interested in in. Maintaining the mental health of our children and allowing them to get out in a structured environment. Um that uh those rules have to be followed without exception.
W- well said. So so with with that, um unless there's no other objection, uh I I will uh double check with the the county. If in fact, the county says that we are not allowed to to do this. Um I will communicate with the board and then we will communicate appropriately with uh the the groups that uh are are typically booked for these next two weeks. Uh but if if there is, if there is no objection to that, uh we will also communicate with to with them. Uh let them know that there's strict adherence to uh all the uh uh the safety requirements that they have in their health and safety plans. And uh that they stay within the size limits and uh we, you know, we will be strictly monitoring those things as well. Uh just uh in in uh in 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 clear uh and uh. Uh transparent uh communications with them on that. So uh thank you for your feedback on that and uh we will be. Ms. Cantor, I see you have your hand up, I'm sorry.
Not about the facilities, only because you presented about the staffing. I just wanted to place a comment about that. About, you know, I, the one of the things that I wanted to bring up, I know that we. Particularly what is our game plan, we have a, we're going to look back at maybe possible return on December sixth. And as you know, there were a lot of staff that were on on self on quarantine. There was also support staff that we hired out, such as the the security, the proctors, the subs. They were, there was a high number of quarantine on that as well. We know there's a fourteen day window for them to, and then with testing to come back. Um my question is, we've seen numbers in the classrooms now. We know there might be some that are just seven kids, some that are six. So or, you know, and the numbers might be different. I I've really pushed forward because we're gonna have staffing issues two weeks from now. And I just really want us to be able to reevaluate the class sizes that are in person. Um you know, you take w- some creativity that I don't want us to not be able to go back to in-person because of staffing. I understand numbers and I understand the metrics, but we need to have a game plan to have staffing addressed. So. I just really want to really push that as I know that's what we're trying to do. Um but looking at our classes and seeing what numbers are in person, who's teaching virtual, who's not teaching virtual. And and look at that. I know we're trying to say we're going to commit to staying with our teachers. Then we went to subs and then we're back with the teachers. Um. We really have, if if the numbers go down, we're still going to be faced with staff challenges. So. Um just to see what the game plan is of what we're gonna do, it would be great in future meetings. So. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miko. Appreciate that.
And along those same lines, I think Jen, um I was going to speak about that right before you chimed in and I think. It's one of the things, right? I looked this week and I kind of went outside as the kids were coming off the bus um from school. And you heard, you know, I didn't hear from one kid that went that wasn't happy to return. Everybody that went was happy to return back. And it was just nice to hear, like, and I talked to everyone from. The K to four level all the way up to the high school level and everybody, they were just. Excited to go back to the building, whether they were wearing masks or whatever it was or having to go down the hallway. I know the ones that were new to the buildings that got lost and had to go with the one direction flow of the traffic and everything, come back again. But it was just a nice experience for them to experience. And. Along with what um Ms. Cantor said, I think we're going to see the staffing challenges and right along with Ms. what Ms. Reese said. Because she's firsthand in there and see it. But I think we really do have to evaluate that because December sixth is going to come around. And parents are going to wonder, and not even then, they're already starting to wonder what are we going to do, right? I don't think we can sit behind it. And and keep, if our numbers are good and it's within what we have in our health and safety plan. We have to be able to look at that and see how do we address some of those challenges. I think it's going to be really, really critical. And we have to have those discussions. I don't know where or when those discussions have to happen, but I really think we have to look at it. So, Mr. Regina, I don't know if you have anything to add as far as what you're doing. I know we have some staff that are out now. On leave and considering now we're back in a virtual environment, I don't know what we're doing to address some of those issues.
Yeah, we 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 had a number of uh. I would say substitutes that were able to to come to us just uh last week. Uh we're working with some of the paperwork, but I think probably the biggest. Move that we have going right now is we have nineteen guest teachers that are uh doing paperwork. We we had. I want to say, uh if I remember correctly, around four to five two weeks ago. Um so I I think in a couple of weeks, we're going to be in a in a very good position. Um to have a larger base number of of guest teachers to be able to utilize. That the concern naturally is, w- once they're available, if we're not using them, um someone else will. So it it's, that's typically been part of the game lately. Um so. Um as a strategy, the one thing that we are planning to do is we are, we are training them now. We're committing to them for a number of days. Um that way we can keep them on the rolls, engage them in online activity. Um they'll be engaged with some of the classrooms and then that way as individuals may be quarantined or may have to go on leave. Um it, we can move them into a classroom quite quickly and they'll be very comfortable with the with the software that we're utilizing. So. Um that's been our focus. I think that's it, we're going to be able to be prepared for that a lot better this round, but um. A- as as you all recognize, there's just obviously natural uh issues that have occurred um throughout this process. So uh. When those challenges come up, uh we'll do our best to to take care of them, but. I think we're going to have a little bit better group to choose from when we go back around the next time.
So how long, I guess you say, um in a couple of weeks, we'll be in a good place. I guess they are completing paperwork. How long do we expect that will take? What's the time timeline for that?
Uh mu- much of it is is employment paperwork based on clearances. Uh they're S T S employees, they're not our employees. So they have to go through their training program. And uh now we we do adapt them rather quickly with our training program. We have a two-day training program for our guest teachers. Um we will be doing that virtually. They can take that at their leisure. So um if they aren't able to come in a specific day. Uh we'll be able to run them through that program. Um and then naturally what they're doing now is we're training them is they're getting the shadowing experience at this time. So. Um we're trying to do that as as quickly as possible. Uh naturally, in a couple of weeks, our staff won't be in buildings, so it won't be as easy to shadow. Um but we'll be looking to to revisit that once our staff is able to come back into the buildings. Um virtual or or in person um to make sure that we can continue that shadowing experience for them.
Okay, so um I guess one more question or comment is, um December sixth, if the county comes back on the second and. And they leave it up to, I guess, the school district based on our health and safety plan and our numbers. I don't know where our numbers will be at because they they they're trending high, but our numbers for some miracle comes back down. Are we in a position to start based on staff and based on what we have now? And I know it that's going to change also. But. I'm just wondering.
So so I think that um you know, typically in in the P D E chart, they they suggest that there's a two-week trend. In the numbers and and that two-week trend uh will likely need to reflect the fact that we've gone under five percent. Or five percent or less of positivity and under. I don't, I don't have the chart in front of me, but it's uh of of incident rate, I think it's forty uh uh. I can't remember the number off the top of my head. I can, I can tell you, just give me a second. I don't, I don't have access to my chart, so I apologize. But in the chart, it tells you when you can, you know, in terms of incident rate and positivity rate. When uh we should be considering uh moving into a certain instructional model. Uh but the but it's not just because you reached that, it's it's that you've reached that for two consecutive weeks is when you should consider that. Um so we, you know, like I said earlier, uh the fact that we are so much higher than many of our neighboring districts. Um I imagine it'll take us a little longer to get to a sta- a stable uh a level of positivity. And incident rate and 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 we'll have to look at that once we reach that. Uh once, once we see those numbers and and of course, once once we get feedback from the Department of Health in a second. I I don't know what, you know, let let's just, let's just be, you know, clear on on what's really happening right now. There's a lot of speculation as to uh what. Uh the governor is going to do. Um you've seen that are some of our neighboring gov- uh governors have uh taken some additional drastic steps. Um it's quite possible that um our governor would would take some additional steps. And uh change uh something uh with regards to what our trajectory might might be headed towards. In terms of coming back in a hybrid environment. Um. I think there's going to be a lot to uh uh to absorb over the next couple of weeks as as we come out of. Uh the holiday uh season.
Doctor Levine made it pretty clear today that she has no intention of intervening and. I I don't know. I I'm not optimistic that that.
I think, I I know, I know, uh but that's at this time. Uh the CHOP, I I I can tell you that the CHOP doctors are 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 meeting with uh the 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 state on a regular basis and. That conversation is is a lot different than what Levine had mentioned. Uh Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I lost my internet connection, so if I'm repeating something when Jen was asking related, I apologize, but uh. Uh the um, Mr. Regina, the you mentioned twenty F C R A five requests. Do we have twenty people out? Is that what that means?
It it means that we had, yes, we had twenty individuals that have requested childcare F F C R A leave. Based on.
And and you mentioned before, if that federal uh program or is not extended past the thirty first of December. In theory, those individuals would have to make a choice also at that point. Uh of coming back. Um not a, not a good situation for them for sure, but I was just curious if we actually had twenty active people on F C R A.
We do. We we do, we, yes, we're twenty active.
And then the other thing is, um I don't know where this fits, uh. But on on our side with the sports, I think it's something we need to consider, um to throw it out there for maybe a a new business, but the. The activity fund, uh activity fee that we're charging this year is something that um. I I think we need to consider if we want to do something differently this year related to that. Um things have obviously. Depending on what happens in each sport um throughout the year, it's going in and out. Um. Seems like a, you know, it's a relatively small fee in the total budget perspective. And maybe something that we'll, we should consider uh doing something with. But just throw it in here because we were talking about sports.
Yeah, 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 Mr. Winters, that's fine. Uh and and all, and full disclosure, uh Mr. Winters and I had a conversation about this. In fact. Actually, Dr. Spewak, who's on our call with us this evening, uh and I had a conversation back. I'm going to say in October or or late September, early October, about the same matter, but by that time. Uh I can tell you that a lot of our students have already, whatever, have already paid into. Uh the uh the activity fund as part of their requirement for being in one sport, you know, and only paying in for, you know, one time a year. And uh Dr. Spewak, I know that you're on the call. If you wouldn't mind just unmuting yourself so that we can get some specifics in terms of of the dollars. So it's my understanding that um we charge seventy-five and a hundred dollars per per uh child. Could you explain the the fee just so everybody knows what we're talking about?
Yes, it's uh seventy-five dollars for all nine through twelve students and fifty dollars for any seventh and eighth grade student. It involves the play, musical, marching band and athletic events.
Okay, and so what, thank you. And and so what, uh I believe Mr. Winters and I had had talked about was. Um in in light of all the uh uh the the challenges with COVID and some of the limitations associated with. Not only athletics, but some of the other activities, um is it really fair for us level uh uh. Imposing this fee on 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 the students when the full experience is not be uh being able to be realized. And so um I said to Mr. Winters that if in fact, um it is the will of the board uh to for us to not collect that. Because this isn't policy. I forget what number policy is, but it says that we will collect the fee. And the fee will be, uh you know, established and 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 Dr. Spewak's correct, it's fifty and seventy-five dollars. Uh while Mr. Bricker won't want to hear this, um you know, we can uh refund all those individuals uh that have paid in. And then stop collecting for any any future um uh uh. Events and activities, but uh it would be, it would be require a vote on the on the on the agenda uh and for us to stop that. Which which is fine, and that's something you can do uh for for uh for next Tuesday night, but. Um, if there's any, uh, I guess, Mister Winters, if you're okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make the recommendation here and and if there's any objection. Then we could uh put it on the agenda for consideration uh for next week.
The, just for the thought process, the thought process is the busing. Much like uh other things, there is busing savings that are associated with less events and so forth. So I I do believe it, it, it would be more or less uh revenue neutral, but.
Yeah. Are there are there any objections to putting a recommendation to uh stop the activity for you for this year and to refund any that we have collected?
I don't have any objection at all, but I wonder, and I don't know if this isn't, if this isn't possible or if it isn't appropriate. I don't want to. You know, add more complication, but for example. I don't, I would choose not to have a refund if I was given that choice. I don't know if you can give someone a choice or not. And what I mean by that is. Three of my children were lucky enough to participate in fall sports, and I feel like they got their money's worth, but I, again, I respect and I like Paul's just. Paul's um uh suggestion, but I don't want to make it more complicated, but maybe there's a choice there. If and if there isn't, that's fine. I'll take a refund, but I I just meant for those that felt. That way, I mean, you know, I felt like although it wasn't a bridge season. That my Arcola student and students and high school student got got. A fair shit, a fair deal, but I do, I'm I'm glad Paul brought it up.
Yeah, I I I appreciate your your comment, Ms. Reese. My my concern is being fair and equitable with all students and families. And so if we're going to do it for one, we should do it for all. Um, and certainly families can choose to say, make a donation to the district. Uh, I'd prefer if they would make the donation to the education foundation instead. And that way, that can, you know, you know, that that might be, you know, a more appropriate way to do that, or make a donation uh to the uh. Uh, backpack program or something to that effect. Um, but but that's that's just, that's just my two cents in this whole, in this whole matter. I'm sorry, Ms. Reese, go ahead.
I was just going to say that's a great idea that, you know, I'd be happy um to do that and people can make their own decisions.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Navrat, you you would comment?
Uh, just saying, I I have no objection to it. I think it's a wise idea. We talked about it before. We don't want to do it because of the complexity of it, but I think we kind of the point. Let's just do it. Helps everybody out.
Yeah, I I do have. Sorry, I just had one concern with that, though. Um. This is something, we can discuss this as a board, but I don't think it's something that we should vote on as a board and possibly we have the solicitor to weigh in on, but. It it impacts several of us financially. I mean, obviously, I I don't think seventy-five dollars in my pocket is going to make a big difference in the grand scheme of things, but. Um, I I just, I want to make sure that we're cautious about board members voting for something that puts money back in our pockets. That's all.
I will, I will check with the solicitor on that, but um, yeah, it it, yeah, I I understand what you're talking about.
My only statement, though, is I really do, we've already voted these coaches in, and I know already that even in the winter sports, these. Coaches are like, they could zoom with them, they could set protocol exercises. They are, they should not be calling the season off. There's a way we've been virtually teaching. These coaches. Should virtually coaching and and allowing them mentorship and. Whatever advice they can to develop their skills, even if they're not hands on.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ms. Cancrio. Um, uh, when when uh Mister Winters and I had this conversation, it was more, it was the whole, it was the whole approach to the activity. So while the, there can be interaction between the student athlete and the coach. To the same extent as there was in a regular non-COVID season. The fact is, you know, they're not having the experience of getting on a bus, uh, going to the away games. They're they're not, you know, having the, uh, you know, the 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 performances. Uh, and 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 all the experiences associated with 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 the with what was generally considered the fee. Uh, that's collected and and Mister Bicker, I guess it's probably appropriate. If you could tell us what estimate what the fee is usually on an on a on a yearly basis. So this board know knows what we'd actually be in to in 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 projected totality. You know, uh, you know, not taking.
If you're looking at just the activity fees alone, it's probably close to sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars. Events we run.
Thank you. Uh, are are there any objections for me? Uh, A, uh, talking to the solicitor, B, uh, if it's okay, putting it on the agenda as per. Uh, the recommendation from uh Mister Winters. Hearing no objection, we'll move forward with that. And believe it or not, that ends uh the guest and scheduled speakers uh for this evening.
Yes, um, I had intended to actually make a statement earlier this evening, but it slipped my mind. Um, I'd like to suggest that we take a brief recess before we dive into the rest of the agenda. Um, just a five minutes for us to. You know, get a glass of water and whatever else we need, stretch our legs, but um. It's nine fifty-six, so we'll come back on around, I'd say, ten oh one.
Okay.
Okay.
Ten oh one, ten oh one it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I have ten oh one. Does anybody else have something different than ten oh one?
I have ten oh and also.
Okay.
Here they all come.
I'm back.
All right, everybody's back. I'm I'm just going to jump into uh where where we left off. Uh, again, then on a next Tuesday, we have the Award of Excellence of Skyview Upper Elementary. We also have some Skyview Upper Elementary students uh to share some of their thoughts with us. Um, we have uh, not that we have specific presentation uh available. Uh, but KCB will be available to answer any last questions that the board may have before uh the vote on the Arrowhead matter. Uh, and then uh if there are any other updates that we have uh on the hybrid virtual instruction by that date, uh, we will present them as well. But at this point in time, uh, the only, you know, complete presentation that I have is on the Award of Excellence uh for for your consideration. Um, and then we have obviously the reports, uh, public comment, and then uh we go into uh the fiscal items. Uh, Mister Bicker.
Thank you, Doctors Erby. This month for the approval, we have those to bills, treasurers report budgetary transfers. Financial statements and single audit report approval. An easement to approve the temporary easement as requested by Lower Providence Township in the amount of five hundred dollars. There are four motions for the Arrowhead Elementary new construction. Uh, the first one is there for the general contractor for a base bid of fifteen million, three hundred eighty-one thousand and alternatives totaling three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The second one is to approve a mechanical contractor. For the amount of three million, four hundred sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars with alternatives totaling thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. The third one is to approve electrical contractor for three hundred, three million, four hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Um. And that includes alternatives of a hundred and five thousand dollars. And then finally to approve a plumbing contractor in the amount of one million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, sixty-seven dollars. We'll also have the Al- Arrowhead Elementary asbestos abatement. Which is to approve first capital installation of York, Pennsylvania in the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Which is a base bid of sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars and three hundred, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of allowances. Will have the Arrowhead Elementary fiber line relocation, which is to approve Tri-M Group of Kennet Square, PA. A quota amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars to carry out the relocation of the existing fiber line. To the existing building of New Arrowhead Elementary School Project. And finally, we'll have the uh Arrowhead Elementary playground relocation. Which would be to approve Buzzbugger of Phoenixville, PA in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars to relocate the existing playground equipment outside of the new building. Limits for the servants of the new Arrowhead Elementary Project.
Thank you, Mister Bicker. And for the board's uh understanding, um, you know, all these matters have been uh have gone through the property committee. But letters G, H, and I are really only needed assuming that um letter F is approved in in full. So there's it's dependent on on those ma- on on letter F being approved. Any questions uh for Mister Bicker on uh matters of financial?
Um, just one uh from only difference from property that I see. I know we had questions around the playground relocation, so that look number looks like it's been adjusted. And I assume it's based on our conversation that has been decreased, if if I'm correct.
Uh, Mister Jones, is that, is that number decreased from the conversation at property?
Uh, no, that is the correct number.
Okay, and and but but in 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 terms of what Ms. Reese had mentioned, uh, there was a conversation about whether or not. The total uh cost uh for this particular playground move. Would require an an additional move thereafter its first move, and how would that all be taken care of? Uh, the answer to that for the members on the property committee that remember what I'm referring to is that uh there will only be one move. And the move will be to uh locate it in the the spot that is at the temporary location closer to the front of the property. Which will be fenced in. And then the uh, the the second. Uh, matter associated with that is there will likely need to be either a third party provider to do the demolition. Or we uh get a change order uh proposal from the general construction contractor to. Destroy the 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 playground, uh, because it's it's not being relocated. Into the space that is destined for the final location of a playground on the Arrowhead property. So we would try to get, we will get the best number at the time to do the demolition. Any other questions for uh Mister Bicker on matters of of financial? Seeing none, we'll go into personnel, Mister Regina.
Thank you, Doctors Erby. Uh, number of items for the board's consideration this evening. Uh, we have two items for administrative job descriptions. We have one item for professional resignation. Uh, this individual um. Had the the opportunity to move on. Uh, it's a very positive experience here in the district, and I know sometimes the board likes. To have an update on why individuals may resign, but this, this was just a uh opportunity for her and her personal life to move on. So just a very good experience and had a great conversation with Laura. Uh, about a week ago, so we're we're happy for and we hope, wish her well. Uh, we have one item for change of status for classified. Uh, this is the employment of uh Beth Rutledge. For the uh secretary to the superintendent of schools position and replacing uh Mary Mandia. Um, and some of you had the opportunity to meet Beth, um, and we're very excited about this appointment. Uh, we have two items for uncompensated leave for professional. We have one classified uncompensated leave. Six supplemental contracts, um, including some activity and supplemental contracts along with the appointment of an indoor boys track assistant coach. We have two additions to classified substitutes. One volunteer list attachment and one item for community education uh with the acquisition of a lifeguard swim instructor. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mister Regina or any manager personnel? Ms. Reese?
Just a quick comment. Um, I did not know that Ms. Rutledge was um. Going to possibly be your uh, the board assistant and the superintendent assistant. Uh, although I'm, you know, wish Ms. Mandia very well and we will miss her. Um. I think I um happen to know Ms. Rutledge and I had no idea, so I'm thrilled. I think you're lucky, we're lucky. That we were able to find such a wonderful replacement because Ms. Mandia would be hard to replace. So that's off. I was excited when I saw this on the agenda a few days ago.
Yeah, Andrea, I had, I had exactly the same response when um, when I saw her and Liz and I had the. Opportunity to meet with her with Doctor Zerby in our regular weekly meeting last week and um. Yeah, I've known Beth for years. Um, and also, I, you know, and now I'm getting to see the professional side of her and. Yeah, I mean, uh, Mary Mandia is leaving a a definite tough shoes to fill there, but um, but if there's anybody who's up for the task, it's Beth. So yeah, I'm really happy that we're going to have her.
Thank you for those comments. Um, any other questions? Uh, Ms. Hall?
Well, we then have a board action item in December to approve her as board secretary then. How do we move forward on that?
That's correct. Ms. Mandia will will remain the uh board secretary through the, uh, I believe it's this December seventh meeting. I I. Whatever if, whatever the first Monday is or whatever our first meeting is in December, and then we will uh put Ms. Rutledge on on that agenda for December.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other uh questions, we move on to the next item under curriculum and programs. Uh, Doctor Walsh.
Thank you, Doctor Zerby. Um, for your consideration and approval, we are looking to remove the high school. Um, proposal for four courses, consumer decisions. um, proposal for four courses, consumer decisions, uh, family consumer science of life, life, focus on foods, international American cuisine. And in addition, um, adding six additional courses, you can see the descriptions there, consumer finance, child development, textile and design, advanced personal finance, dual enrollment women in America through the Montgomery County Community College, and photography too. This is, this was discussed at the October Ed Committee and we're moving it forward for your approval and consideration, um, which will be part of the program of studies which will become active next month.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Yep. Any questions for Dr. Walsh on any of these matters? Uh, Mr. Winters?
I believe there's been a lot of confusion about the, the removal of these class. Can you go through just real quick for those that are uh, on the, in the audience on why we're removing those classes and what we're replacing them with in the FCSS program?
Yes. There's been a shift from, um, more about the, the way from the foods to more of the personal finance. Um, you know, it's actually been evolving over time, not only in the fact, but other districts as well, um, and more into the child development. And you can see there, there really is a, um, a strong focus on, um, you know, the, the grades eleven and twelve of that child development course as well as the consumer finance. So it's more in that personal finance part of the requirements and financial literacy.
Also, wasn't there, uh, uh, participation element for these class, under, undersubscribed courses over a series of years as well?
That's correct. And that's part of the curriculum review. Um, you know, we're always, uh, examining those undersubscribed courses as well as uh, trends from the state and recommendations, not only from Montgomery County, but just Harrisburg as well on what, uh, college and career readiness should look like.
So is it fair to say the four classes that are being removed are, are replaced by the four classes that you see? Uh, uh, almost as a one for one?
Very similar. That is correct.
Thank you.
And, you know, I just wanted to add, I have the, I, we went over this with Dr. Surtini and the October education and those three courses, there was six enrolled out of the class. There was nine enrolled out of the FCS class. So they looked at that and they look at the trends of the past couple of years. So that was under described. So he reviewed this pretty extensively, Dr. Surgenean, like Dr. Walsh is explaining than these new proposed courses. Um, but I will also add, they're still maintaining the, the cooking, the other FCS courses. So there are exploratories that are talking about the focusing of cooking and food and, 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 and the child development. So there's, there are more out there. These happen to be courses that literally only six people enrolled in, nine enrolled in. They're really low numbers and it's requirement of 15 to be in a course. So, um, he did present all of this information as well, so.
And I will just add, um, that I was opposed, everyone knows, to the changes at our COLA with FCS. But I was happy to see that some, um, thought was put into the high school FCS courses and some revamping, um, to be a little more, um, with today's needs. Um, with the fact that a lot of people are getting, um, food education, um, from different avenues in our world now. Um, so for me who was disappointed with the, uh, changes at FCS at our COLA, I was pleased to see them update FCS at the high school and to put some focus on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Are there other questions, uh, from members of the board for Dr. Walsh? Ms. Aubrey Larsonese?
Yeah, it's not so much a question as it is just a, I guess, a comment. I, I wanted to, the, the other board members have already addressed the, the comments that I had about how this is, these are typically undersubscribed classes. Um, and so that's part of the reason why we make these decisions. But I would also like to reiterate that we have um, a, a pretty great program for clubs and activities at our, our schools. And if there is sufficient student interest in, in these topics that, you know, maybe are not being met by the FCS curriculum anymore, there's always the opportunity for students to look into, um, creating, um, clubs and activities. Um, so, you know, I, I hate to see opportunities be taken away, but if we kept every class that was undersubscribed, we would have, um, the, the scheduling, uh, nightmare that we already have would be 10 times worse, I'm sure. So, um, I am sorry to see some of these go, but I do think that, um, you know, our process is sound for, for making these decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey Larsonese. Any, uh, any other comments on stuff for Dr. Walsh? Seeing no other hands, so one of the next item policy. Uh, there are seven policies for first reading, but for your approval next week, there are seven for second reading, including accident insurance, student complaints, student government, student fundraiser, hazing, bullying, cyberbullying, investment of district funds. Any questions on any of those, uh, policies for your consideration next week? Seeing, seeing no hands on, on those items under others, uh, at this point, we have no gifts or donations or trips. And then we have dates for board members' calendars and that is my signal to turn the meeting over to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Um, so at this time, we will take public comment. Um, I'm sorry, courtesy of the floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward to speak on, um, any matter that may at some point come before the board. Um, we ask that members of the audience keep their comments to four minutes or less. And if you could, um, when I call and you've just introduced yourself with your full name and municipality. Um, I have a list of, uh, community members who have pre-registered to speak. So if you have pre-registered, if you could please raise your hand so that I can find you more easily in our list and we'll get started. So first I have, uh, Jim Malik. Oh, it looks like, Dr. Zerby, I do not have host privileges, so I can't let anyone in.
So does that mean we have to not have courtesy of the floor this evening?
No.
I thought I made you co-host, so here we go.
There we go. Now I have the buttons.
I was just, I was just being silly.
I know you are. Okay, Dr. Malik, you are in whenever you're ready.
You hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Jim Malik Warsester. By all the glitches that have been going on in this, um, Zoom meeting, it's time to go back to in-person meetings. Uh, I lost the connection about forty minutes ago for about five minutes. And I checked with other people and they lost connection as well. Uh, there's no reason why we can't meet in public. Why you're not doing it is beyond me. Uh, you mentioned a Dr. Levine is someone you guys appear to be relying upon. He's a pediatric psychologist who packed nursing homes with infected COVID patients. Why you would want to rely on somebody like that who's not qualified and who's got a proven track record of killing people i- is beyond me. Um, Dr. Zerby states that the rising, uh, rate, the COVID rate has nothing to do with methactin. And, and even, uh, you said the same thing, Ms., Ms., uh, Chair or Ms. President. Um, my understanding is that Dr. Zerby already had COVID. He was in a committee meeting around me coughing, potentially exposing me to COVID. And I never was contacted. There was no contact tracing. So if you really want to know where the problem lies, the problem lies with you guys. Not with people at home and what kids are doing at home and kids are going to birthday parties. You guys aren't doing your jobs. Uh, cases that mean absolutely nothing when it comes to whether you should have the schools open or not. I would suggest you look at the Brown University study that was just published, I don't know, a couple of months ago. That will, will tell you everything you need to know. Um, so you need to, to kind of brush up on some basic knowledge. I think it's shameful for Ms. Larsonese to blame the kids for the bump in COVID numbers. And Ms. Larsonese, you're not a healthcare professional. You have no medical background, but you're arrogant enough to give us all a lecture about COVID and what kids should do and not do outside the school. I find that to be really insulting. Um, and, uh, I, I think you need to reevaluate that kind of a, uh, approach. Um, according to Mr. Navarette, it's about, the whole thing's about following the rules. And that's what it really is. You guys exerting your power, enforcing your rules, enforcing whatever you think is the way things should be done on other people. Uh, you know, I think, uh, people have individual liberties that have to be honored. Um, as far as, uh, appointing Mr. Regina as the, uh, assistant superintendent, Chase is one of the nicest guys I know, but he's an absolute disaster as an open records officer. And I can't just blame him because he's taking all of his orders from your solicitor. They're an absolute disaster. But, you know, to, to, to have all these glowing things being said when Chase is just an abstract failure at the rate to no process, I, I don't agree with. Dr. Zerby talked about the budget cuts affecting students in the classroom. How can that possibly be? We've had $3 million surpluses. What budget cuts are you talking about? $3 million surpluses for five years and somehow kids are being affected in the classroom? Uh, I don't understand that. And as far as your diversity and inclusion committee, it's an absolute joke. Are you suggesting that methactin school district is racist? Are you suggesting that?
Thank you, Dr. Malik. That's your four minutes.
Thank you.
Next I have Kelly Arnone. Ms. Arnone, you're in whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is actually Anthony Arnone, um, Lower Providence Township. Um, and I wanted to first, uh, thank you for following the, the outlined health and safety plan and taking consideration the health and safety of, uh, the students, the teachers and all other staff, uh, at the school and within the district. Um, I did have a question just regarding the, the most recent, uh, PA mask requirements that Dr. Levine had gone over today and wanted to know if, if the, uh, requirements that she outlined were going to be followed. Um, for anyone that would be allowed to participate in activities or events, uh, such as sports, uh, like ARA, uh, in the facilities, if they would be requiring masks for, uh, even those playing coaches. I think that's, that's how the statement was, was put out today and just wanted to see if that would be followed, a kind of adjustment to the health and safety plan for, um, outside groups using the facilities. Um, with regards to the Arrowhead Forward, uh, project, I did have a question um, on the distributed antenna system. Um, I believe, I believe that, um, Mr. Kelly had mentioned that it was for private cellular use and not necessarily requ- requirement of, uh, for first responders or for emergency response cellular system. Uh, so I just wanted like a clarification on that because that would be a code requirement that, that is typically a code requirement for specific buildings, but I don't think it applies for this particular building. Um, so if it is only for use on private cellular, it seems like it may be a little bit uh, beyond, uh, maybe the necessity of that building. And I would urge some consideration and maybe look at options for prepping the building for it, but maybe not implementing it day one. Um, as, as something to look at. Uh, I know back when, uh, considerations were being made for the Arrowhead Forward project and some of the discussion of, uh, furnishings and equipment that, that was being, uh, carried. I think that's $750,000 number that Mr. Kelly had mentioned is being held for that. Uh, I did want to ask, I know like last year, I believe there was a discussion of upgrading to VoIP phones and some of the network systems that were going into the current buildings and see if that is actually in that 750,000 number or if we're able to offset some of that number because of equipment that may have been purchased in this last year. And even some equipment that maybe was purchased as part of the COVID response. Um, you know, if there is equipment that is already available and wouldn't need to be in that big number. Um, so just a couple of questions and looking for clarification on that. But, uh, again, thank you, uh, for taking the health and safety seriously of all the students and everyone in the district. And, uh, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Okay, next I have John Andrews.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. I still oppose the Arrowhead project. My view is global, not insular. What I mean is we don't need the Arrowhead space with option C. And only option C restores our quality of education that we had with the K to five and six to eight setup before Skyview. When Skyview opened, we changed to the present setup. I claimed at the time grade five belonged in the elementary schools and our COLA should stay as a six to eight school. Instead, an educational decline or perhaps a plummet has occurred. Our high school rank has dropped from the teens to 65th. So I strongly recommend a return to option C, no matter how pretty or fancy a new elementary school should be. Schools with our present grade setup are rare. Only three out of the 61 districts near Philadelphia have it. Option C schools are most popular, 29 of them. And their high schools mostly rank well. Dr. Zerby's proposed strategic plan revision of January called for improving our high school rank, but lacked any solution. Option C is the sure way for you to fix the rank or education quality as directors. Arrowhead or full day kindergarten ideas won't do it. Among the top 30 districts in the four counties around Philly, the 13 option C districts averaged a much better high school rank than the other 17 top districts. Though, those same 13 districts had an average enrollment gain of 6% over the last decade versus the other setups having an average gain of only three tenths of a percent. Methactin has the worst enrollment drop in the county at minus 10% over the decade. Home buyers clearly favor option C schools. Option C also saves $50 million, improves building utilizations and avoids delaying needed master plan projects by three or more years. What a bargain. I've submitted numerous hearing documents supporting option C and more since then. Hopefully you will consider facts, not sales pitches, and choose option C ahead of the unjustified want to put Arrowhead out to bid. If you ignore the hit, public hearing inputs, especially the five to one rate of opposition to the new Arrowhead school, it's a sham, just like a new Arrowhead. As a retired rocket scientist, I've peppered you with more than 60 documents based upon science, reason, and financial and educational factors for 24 months already. Perhaps you didn't listen or read, or perhaps you just use your power to play politics. Also consider the wise and frequent inputs by Beckelman, Malik, and Earnshaw. I feel like the ancient scientist Galileo, who was called foolish and absurd and punished for his radical but correct realizations of which body resolves around the other in the skies above us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Uh, next I have Chun Ling Ma. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, Chun Ling Ma, Warsester Township. Uh, I also have a question regarding Arrowhead's new, new school. Um, I got involved, got to know this in September, uh, when I heard the public hearing. Before that, I had no idea what this project was going on. Um, because I, I also asked my neighbors, um, very few people knew it. So there was very little publicity about this project. Anyway, I know, uh, the board asked us to, uh, on September 8th to collect public comments uh, up until October 8th. And I spread news to my neighbors and, and start to, uh, having them sending in comments. And I told them the board would have a vote on October 27th. So, but on October 27th, the board meeting, uh, the superintendent told us, uh, the vote was not required. I, we were like, the public was like, what is this? I mean, you guys asked us to collect comments, we did. And then, and you guys told us there would be a vote. And then when the day came, then you said, oh, sorry, we, we didn't need to vote. I, I just don't think it is responsible or professional behavior on this, uh, school district or the board or, or the administration. I don't know whoever should be. I don't know whoever should be take responsibility for this. And on top of that, after October 27th, and, and I, I know people like John Andrews, um, Brian Earnshaw and Jim Malik. Joe Bickel might be asking about this project and about the comments collected. Uh, on top, I, and, uh, the administration or the board never gave a, a direct public answer to what exactly what kind of comments you collected and what was the ratio of the opposing or supporting, uh, what, what kind of comments, typical comments. Basically, there was no feedback on the comments you received. And what the point, if you, if you ask us the public to collect, collect the comments and then you don't, uh, give us a feedback or, and everything in this project, I just went along, moving along at a full speed as if nothing happened. And in fact, uh, I had a people, including myself, we tally the comments on our own. We found like, uh, on, from the comments, we received a 60% uh, opposing it and the 40% of, uh, supporting it. And, uh, on top of that, I had a, um, led effort doing a petition of opposing this Arrowhead new school. And there are 200, more than 200 people signing the petition. And this was all, seems to me all ignored by the board. I just don't know if the board were elected to reflect, uh, uh, comment, uh, the residents' voice. Or are, are you really represent us, our interest? Uh, to me, it's just like, uh, we, we're like, uh, being tricked or something. It's just that feeling. I'm, I'm not saying you intended to do that, but it appeared it came across that way. Uh, so I just don't think it's right with the way you handle it because today you're talking about the biz. Uh, it's about talking nuts and bolts about the project. I think first of all, you need to first, first to consider the public's voice, whether to build the school or not. Then next you, you discuss how you're going to build the school. Uh, with, with this much opposition, you just, uh, as if nothing happened, you just still go along and went along. Everything, you know, with a full speed to build it, I just don't think it's, it's a responsible behavior in front of the, the residents. And I, and also the school district should focus more on the education quality. It's very unsettling, uh, from 2013, our high school ranking dropped from 11th to the 65th. When I bought my house eight years ago, I liked this place because the, the school ranking was pretty good, but now.
I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off there. It's four minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Next I have Brian Earnshaw.
Brian Earnshaw, Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. First regarding the results from the 2019, 20 fiscal year, I note the surplus of 3.1 million. Um, this is at least eight years in a row, the district has posted a surplus. In the last four years alone, those surpluses have totaled approximately $10 million, which is equivalent to five and a half years of revenue from tax increases at the Act One Index. Um, all these surpluses, I also note that the amount returned to taxpayers is zero and counting. And given the schools are closed this year, at least probably for half the year, we're leading to another surplus and, um, questioning whether or not any of that will be returned to taxpayers. Um, the surplus has been set aside for capital spending and for most recent year, uh, increase in PISOs cost, which now looks like, based on Mr. Winter's comments, will not materialize. So my question is, will any of that money be returned to taxpayers? Um, as Mr. McGinnis notes, the district can borrow money at an extremely cheap rate. Um, accordingly, the most efficient use of those surpluses is to return those, those funds to taxpayers. Taxpayers could use that money to pay off mortgages, high interest rate credit card debt, uh, fund college education or other, whatever other needs they may deem, deem, um, most important to them. Um, without returning that money, they have no choice. So you really need to consider what's happening with these surpluses. Uh, I note tonight, you're very quick to return activity fees to parents that have kids in a school, but you refuse to return surplus to the taxpayers. Um, I thank Mr. Brigger for explaining the budget variances. Um, but the two questions, he noted a significant variance in social security and retirement expenses, um, which he had something to do with, um, substitute teachers, which didn't make sense to me. Uh, so if that could be explained better, that would be appreciated. There's also a tech salary budget variance as a result of account classification, but there was no offset highlighted elsewhere. It should be in that zero of its budget classification. Regarding the admin staffing recommendation, um, there was no discussion of how that will be funded in the current year's budget and the next year's budget where the cost will exceed $600,000. I also wonder why there's not going to be an external search done for assistance superintendent. Uh, Mr. Regina may be very qualified, there could be somebody out there who's better. Regarding Arrowhead, um, I sent an email to the board, um, on Sunday with various questions that I think should be considered before the board commits to spend $50 million at next week's meeting. Uh, I think the one board member who responded to me, um, others I've heard, uh, I've heard nothing. In that email, I think that the board needs to address the stale data on which this decision is being made, um, including the enrollment projections, which contain errors, has been communicated many times. And those errors are even exacerbated by when you look at the current enrollment of K to four projected versus actual, actual being nearly 8% below. Um, I'm wondering if the board has any concern about $50 million being added to the debt service in the district's budget, which is a 70% increase and extends the debt maturities by an additional 11 years to the year 2046. Um, there's been no projections or any budget outlook, considering all the expected master plan spending. Um, as highlighted earlier, um, there's been no discussion of the Act 34 testimony. Um, quite a few, uh, taxpayers commented, but there's been no acknowledgement of the board of any of those comments for or against. There's still been no long-term building utilization plans to address our college building use at less, less than 60% utilization. And a projected over 100% utilization worse after within the next two years. Um, regarding KCBA, um, nobody really challenged why their estimate was off 24% on the general contractor costs. Um, I wouldn't view their budget as conservative, I view it as a significant error. Um, while there was some attempt to explain, explain that tonight, um, it really, it was kind of general, a lot of anecdotal comments and no real information on why they were so far off on the rest of it.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Thank you. Um, and then last for our speakers this evening, I have Amy Smith, whenever you are ready, Ms. Smith.
Hi, Amy Smith, Warsester Township. I have a, a couple of things here and I'll, I'll be brief. I just want to say, uh, thank you to the board and Dr. Zerby and to the district for making sure that these meetings are accessible for people right now. I have family members right now who have tested positive for COVID and, uh, we wouldn't be able to leave the house to attend in public meetings. So I appreciate that this option is here and that I don't have to worry about anybody coughing in the room or, or being nervous, uh, when, when we're someplace in public to be able to hear this important information. So thank you for making sure that these meetings are accessible and being responsible and, and making sure that everyone is, is safe. I also want to say, um, that in the course of, of my job, I do have meetings with the Department of Health as well and, uh, at, at the state level. And I am aware that if, um, if we stay on this current trajectory in six weeks, all of the, all hospitals in Pennsylvania, their ICU, uh, floors would be at capacity. And that's, that's not only impacting people who have COVID that need care, but also people that, that need other types of, of care in the ICU. So the fact that, um, you know, the county has stepped in and, and that we're being cognizant of our numbers in Lower Providence and in Warsester, uh, is comforting. So I, I'm thankful to Dr. Zerby for, for being proactive in, in trying to do what we can to control, uh, any additional spread in our community. And I'd also like to speak to, uh, the DEI office. I want to say thank you for, um, the district's work in not only approving this office in, um, in, back in July, but also the ad hoc committees work with Dr. Zerby to make sure that this continues to move forward, even in these challenging times. I recognize that there are districts around us that are moving forward with this and that there is research and data that shows the improvements for all learners and all members of the community when there's a DEI focus. DEI does include diversity, equity and inclusion. So we're, we're not talking about any specific population, we're talking about all populations. So it's fantastic that the, the district is putting an emphasis on this for everyone. And I appreciate, uh, the amount of work that you're doing and, and the fact that, uh, there will be a vote about, about, um, contracting with Dr. Campbell next week. I, I think it's, it's important. And I also wanted to speak just briefly about Arrowhead and say thank you for the presentation this evening and for the years of work that the board and the, and that members of the community have put into this project. I have never felt that there's, there's been a lack of communication, um, you know, since this has become a project. Uh, all the information has been available, questions have been answered, and I know that there's been a, a lot of publicity around it. So I just want to voice my support for the project and say thank you for the work that's being done and, and how diligent the board has been in, uh, looking at this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Uh, it looks like we had a couple more, um, pre-registered speakers who raised their hands. Um, so, um, next we have Chan Yang. You're in whenever you're ready, you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you so much. And the board member, uh, have such a wonderful opportunity to, uh, evolve the community, uh, people to come here, uh, great.
Before you get started, I just need to ask you to state your name and municipality.
Uh, yeah, my name is Chan Oh Yang, uh, in, uh, Lower Providence.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, uh, great, uh, thank you so much. A great work, uh, particularly in the current challenging situation. You guys, uh, uh, put, um, the personal, uh, particular family effort into that, uh, school district, uh, appreciate it. Um, the, the way, um, uh, I just put some personal, uh, uh, some input with our experience in the other organization, right? In our, uh, own employment, uh, some area. In this challenge, you give a, a lot of, uh, you know, uh, challenge to all the organization, not only this, uh, school, uh, district. Your challenge may be more specific. But all the organization look at not only treated as a challenge, but seems like there's a lot of opportunity. Particularly, um, when we, uh, give some couple, couple examples, in our organization, we had a original, maybe five years, uh, digital, digitalization, uh, uh, project, but the, we actually, the situation put so much pressure, our company actually, uh, getting accomplished within the year. So this is a great, uh, uh, since come out of the pandemic. Another one is like, um, we had a facility issue also. Um, originally, many people talk about the remote working is, uh, is not allowed in the organization. But because of this situation, we actually put, uh, forced to be, um, remotely working. So what happened is that the situation, the company seeing that, uh, we get a, a greater cost reduction. So the, the many individual people get a, you know, um, personal, uh, working and family balance better. So there, um, they're cutting the facility. Uh, they're looking forward, not only the year, looking forward, there's a new way of working environment coming down the road. So we actually, uh, doing that, uh, like five years of planning and, and they cut one third of the facility utilization. So this is a great opportunity. I, I just, uh, give you some, uh, outside the perspective will give you the leadership of our, uh, my second school, the district and looking the, you know, a new way of looking your planning. Uh, there, there may be some more opportunity, uh, could help, uh, get your goal, uh, accomplished. But of course, the school is, is different situation. So looking your, um, I, I would say, uh, that's tied into that facilitated planning around, um, the elementary school closing. Um, I, I just suggested the leadership, uh, needed to be balanced and looking forward, not, not only based on some, uh, data, uh, projected data is very outdated, uh, particularly when in the past, uh, 10 years, we experienced the, the, some kind of projection, the particular demographic, uh, demographic projection about students, uh, increase and not materialize. And the same decrease, let's say, when we planning increase the, the, the student number and we created, um, your, uh, Skyview and then we, we look like all the numbers going down, we close all of them. And now people, you see again, the number will increase, will create a new Arrowhead. So the, the way I would, uh, I'm outsider, I'm not a kind of inside and look at, uh, your work exactly, but I, I try to give you some different perspective. Uh, that summarized this kind of pandemic may have gave you more new perspective, giving you more, you know, strategic planning, uh, utilize that to get a, uh.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, that's four minutes. I have to cut you off there.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next I have Jessica Bradbury. Um, okay, there you go. Now you're in, whenever you're ready.
Hey, good evening. Uh, Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. Um, question about the budget overage that I saw tonight in the technology space. I think that there was mention that was the transfer. I'm assuming it's, um, the, uh, position that was appointed on special assignment. So does that mean that the person that was prior in the role and qualified was making $90,000 less than our unqualified person in that role? Um, I also think I saw a budget for 112,000 for the new director of technology, though Dr. Zerby listed it as a supervisor. Regardless of what we're calling it, that salary is woefully inadequate in this market. Um, I work in IT, I, I've done a lot of hiring recently. Please get some, some benchmark data and post that position with an appropriate target if we want to get anyone quality. Um, given that we're in the middle of a crisis where the quality of education is tied to technology, it's outrageous that that was ranked last, not up for consideration next week, not to be posted till March and prioritized after diversity, equality, inclusion and the right to no positions. I know they're both important, but I would argue tech is the most important right now. Um, on Thursday, I listened to numerous administrators from other districts speak to the Board of Health pleading to be given autonomy and not swept up in a county-wide closure. But I did not see Mefacton Administration anywhere. I'm guessing you were hiding in your basements, hoping the county makes the call for you. Um, frankly, I'm sick of hearing about staffing. Thank you, Ms. Cancro, for being the only voice of reason out there. Um, no one said this is going to be easy and I realize there's a lot of moving pieces, but I'm seeing it work in other districts. So why can't we make it work here? I know COVID cases are rising and, but schools are essential and they should be the last to close. There was an article in the New York Times written by Dr. Erin Carroll, professor of pediatrics, titled, "Are We Seriously Talking About Closing Schools Again?" I'd encourage you ought to read it. Um, essentially it calls into question the threshold, thresholds that we're using to close schools, pointing out the flaws because it's not based on statistical modeling or science. Um, it talks about other methods and all of these methods are already covered in our health and safety plan. I've heard you say you want the children back in the classroom, but now tonight I'm hearing you say you hope the governor intervenes and shuts us down. Seems like you like the path of least resistance, whatever is easier for you. Uh, can we please stop operating with the one-size-fits-all mentality? We need separate consideration for our students with special needs and those in K through four. There's so much data and behavior, if you look at Philadelphia, all the way to Europe, suggesting that the risks keeping the youngest students completely virtually significantly outweighs the risk of bringing them in the classroom. Their mental health matters too. Their mental health matters too. The safest place for them to be socializing is in the classroom. I hear you say that it's important for us to socialize them, but we can't socialize them. So I'm not sure what you propose there. They need to be in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradbury. Okay, and then final, um, speaker tonight, we have Hong Tian. Could introduce yourself and your, um, your name and municipality.
Hello, uh, my name is Hong Tian and, uh, I'm a, a Lower Providence Township resident. And, um, I just, this is my first time to, uh, join the meeting like this. Uh, and first of all, thank you all of you, uh, hardworking and, uh, I know it's late. Hopefully I'm the, gonna be the last one who speak. Um, um, I just wanted to, um, to talk about the Arrowhead project. And because, um, I got involved, just like my neighbor, Chen Lang was mentioned. Um, I just received the, uh, like a postcard, uh, for just September 8th, uh, board meeting. And I was under impression that, uh, we're going to talk about this and you guys going to collect all the, uh, public comments and going to make a decision, uh, based on that. But, um, but after listening to today's meeting, when you guys gave the briefings and everything. So I'm under the, the impression that the timeline was since July of this year, you, you guys already decided to. since July of this year, you guys already decided to build the new school for the Arrowhead. And for the September eighth, the meeting was just a information to inform the public that the school, that the new Arrowhead school is going to be built. I'm not sure if that's, if I understand that correctly, the timeline. And also, for the October twenty-seventh, when we thought that you guys are going to have a board vote for this project, but actually, then somehow it just got canceled or it didn't even were on the agenda. And then, on the twenty-eighth, I think October, you already got the building permit for the new Arrowhead school. So for me, I'm just thinking, I just wanted to know, was the, when you guys make the decision to build the new school, was the data and was the, the things to support, to support this decision? Like the capacity of the students, the enrollment of the students and so forth. And especially for this kind of, like, we're in this really difficult situation right now. And yes, a lot of parents are working from home, but we work. We are home, but we have to work. And it's hard for us to manage our children's education and work together. So I'm just thinking that instead of putting that fifty million dollars on a new project, can we just use this kind of money to, like, to get enough PPEs and get enough, like, to came up a plan, how can we get our students back to school? And to help the parents in need and help the students in need. It's just my, my only, that's my only. I don't know how to. Well, anyways, that was just my two questions. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like that's it for courtesy of the floor this evening. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to respond to. We've already spoken a number of times about a return to in-person meetings, and it's not something that we're planning on doing. I believe wholeheartedly that accessibility for all is important. And as long as we have COVID and as long as there are restrictions to public gatherings, I think that it's important that we continue to meet in a virtual environment to allow accessibility for everyone, particularly when I know for a fact that there are members of our community who publicly advertise that they won't wear masks. I'm not putting our board and our staff into situations where they could be potentially exposed to someone who has a cavalier attitude like that about COVID. Any allegations about potential COVID cases within the organization? I just, I don't even know how to respond to that, but I will say that the contact tracing system does work. We had a family member exposed potentially early on in COVID, back in March, and we got a call from the Public Health Department and everything worked exactly the way it was supposed to. So I can attest that any potential exposures would be contacted. Regarding our Arrowhead project, I need to reiterate that the Act Thirty-four hearing and that the comments and the feedback that we received is not the same as a referendum. It is not the same as a survey. It is not the same as a poll. It was, is a legal mechanism for us to collect feedback. We have also collected feedback from a lot of other mechanisms in the years that we have been discussing this project. I know that there's been a lot of talk about, you know, applying in rankings, but I've got to say, there are so many variables that have changed over the course of the last ten years in our district that to pin our rankings to something like grade configuration without having any sort of a scientific study done, to me, is just not accurate. We've had other things that could directly impact student performance, such as the elimination of the T-one program, such as changes in our curriculum throughout the district. There are any number of variables that we could point a finger to and say, that's the reason. But the truth is, we don't know. If we knew exactly what it was that changed our rankings, I'm sure we would have done something to address it by now. Think that's all I have for this evening. If any other board members have anything they'd like to say before we adjourn. Ms. Hall?
Sorry, I just, I had one comment. There was a question about use of facilities. And Policy seven of seven does include as a prohibited activity conduct that would constitute a violation of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code and/or local, state, or federal laws and regulations or existing board policies. So I think that would clarify that use of facilities should include whatever orders have come down from the Pennsylvania Health Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And yes, Dr. Rachel Levine does continue to be an excellent source of information at Health for Pennsylvania. Anyone else before we adjourn? Alrighty, then I will take this opportunity to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.